Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board Trustees is now convened in a board work session on Monday, January 13th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Mark Henry Administration Building for the purpose of reviewing the portion of the Thursday, January 16th regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognition posted in the meeting as required by Texas law. I'd like to welcome our members of the audience and those who are online and the board of our trustees. We are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. It's not the role of the board to make day-to-day operations decisions. The management day-to-day operations of the district are responsibility to superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a meeting of the board trustees held in the public. This is not a meeting of the public and audience members may not participate in the meeting outside of the designated agenda items for a citizenation or agenda comment. The meeting will be conducted in orderly and efficient manner in accordance with the law and local policy. To achieve this goal, participants are asked in the audience to expect to abide by the rules outlined in board policies. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to tonight's items. Agenda items may not be necessarily handled in the order as in the notice. During the meeting, the board may adjourn to closed session. In the event the board meets in closed session, to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as per amendment in sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are live on the district website. They're also available on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to accurately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask you refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for your time tonight and your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, remarks, announcements, recognitions, board comments, and citizenation will be presented in the regular board meeting on Thursday, January 16th. Patrons who have registered to speak this evening on agenda items may see their names listed on the screen behind me. Before your name is called, please move forward and sit down in one of the reserved seats on the front row. When you approach the podium, you'll see a monitor on each side of the podium. When is your time begin speaking, the digital presentation monitor will be slid on top of the monitor. When you see the 30-second and 15-second warning light to wrap up your comments, the timer may be set in accordance with the number of speakers registered this evening. We will now proceed with reports portion of the agenda. Five A Administration Provider Report on the Formative Assessment Data. Dr. Gory, welcome. Your first presentation. Good luck.
Thank you. Good evening. Today, we are sharing data related to strategic plan goal one. As shared in November, CFISD provides district-wide formative assessments. My presentation's up. Yes, formative assessments with the purpose of monitoring student learning, providing feedback to enhance teaching and learning, identify gaps, and tailor instruction. After each formative assessment, district data is reviewed at both the campus level and the district level to celebrate achievements and to identify areas of concern. Today, we are looking at goal one, which addresses an increase in performance on STAR and the EOC. By 2029, scores at the approaches level will increase from 80% to 90%, from 56% to 71% at the meets level, and from 26% to 41% at the masters level. The yearly performance objective to meet the 2029 goal is 2% growth at the approaches level and 3% at the meets and masters level. This table shows the data progress monitoring two, progress monitoring number two, in reading language arts for students in grades six, seven, and eight. The first column is a list of student groups in the report. All, African-American, Hispanic, white, Asian, economically disadvantaged, sped, and ESL. The second column shows the total number of students tested in each reporting group. The next column shows the number of students and the percentage of students who did not meet expectations. Next to that column, students who scored at the approaches or higher level, the number and the percentage. Continuing to move to the right, the number of students who scored and the percentage at the meets or higher level. And finally, the last column displays the percentage of students who achieved at the masters level. Each subsequent table will present data in the same format. For reading language arts, please go back. If you look at reading language arts, bringing your attention to the all-student group, there were 24,268 students tested in the all-group. At did-not-meets, we have 9%. Approaches are higher, 91%. Meets are higher, 78%. Masters are higher, 52%. And you can continue to see how the groups below performed. The next table shows science, fifth grade and eighth grade. In the all-student category, 10% did not meet, 90% are at approaches or higher, 74% at meets or higher, and 52% at masters or higher. And again, you can see the subsequent populations below. The next table is social studies, grade eight. And this is DPM one for grade eight. In the all-category, 19% of the students did not meet expectations. 81% or higher are at the approaches level, 63% at meets are higher, and 45% at masters. This table shows English one, DPM two, scores for English one. All students, 7% did not meet, 93% at approaches or higher, 89% at meets are higher, and 43% at masters are higher. And again, the subsequent populations are below. Next, we have English two. 11% did not meet, 89% at approaches or higher, 83% at meets are higher, and 30% at the masters And our last table, U.S. History, this is also a DPM one school, these are also DPM one scores. 1% of our student body population did not meet, 99% at approaches or higher, 91% at meets are higher, and 70% at masters are higher. Many of our data reflect progress, demonstrating growth and achievement in key areas. However, we recognize that some areas and sub-populations continue to require targeted support to close the performance gaps. To address these needs, we are implementing a strategic approach that includes but is not limited to providing professional development focused on delivering high-quality first-time instruction that meets the needs of all of our individual learners, utilizing video coaching to refine teaching practices and enhance instructional effectiveness, equipping our educators with tools to increase student engagement and promote deeper learning, reinforcing foundational skills and concepts through strategic spiraling to build mastery over time, and continuing the consistent use of progress monitoring to assess student growth, identify areas of need, and adjust instructional strategies accordingly. At this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Dr. Gory, when I look at the total tested, I see a pretty broad range of the number of students tested across the groups. Can you give us some guidance on how students from all the different groups were chosen?
So the, sure. The testing, Mrs. Scanlon, is based on the students enrolled in those courses. So in fifth grade science and eighth grade science, it's a combined number of students who take fifth, who are in fifth grade science, all of our fifth graders are in science, but in eighth grade, students who are in eighth grade science. When you get to the courses like English one and U.S. History, it's the number of students enrolled in those courses, and that varies based on student selection.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Natalie, go ahead.
First of all, welcome. You've done some really strong work in helping our campuses across the district and really excited to see you in this role, an opportunity to look at it from a broader perspective and bring your expertise and your excellence and your eye and your ideas. So very excited about working towards these goals, goal one, two, all the thousands that we always said Linda had, all those things under her. So thank you, glad to have you. I wanted to point out a few positive things. I feel like, and then I had a couple of questions on U.S., actually, I will start, we'll go backwards, forwards. On U.S. History, that's the one subject where we don't see a gap between African-American, Hispanic, and white and Asian students. And there still is, of course, that ESL, look at that, and special education down to 6%. That's phenomenal. I know this has been a strong area for us in the system, and for me, it really goes along with a lot of the legislation to make, teach kids the pride in our country, to understand our history. And so this is exceptional work. And I also want to point out in English one, English one has been a tough test for a lot of years, and to see that our ESL populations, although it's 19%, I feel like that is something that is improvement. And so I'm not sure if this is a trend we've been seeing or how far that is off from the last year without being able to compare it here, but I'm intrigued to see that number, even though it's not graded, looks good, you know what I mean? And even the gap here is just, actually, I'll move into some of the others, but just this, there's still a seven-point gap here between African-American, Hispanic, and white and Asian kids, but to see a 9% do not meet in English one, as long as the rigor was there in this DPM, and assuming it's kind of a tested and true one.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's very, very good to see because English one, you know, we've had 30, 40% failure rates at some point. So then a question I have, looking at the reading language arts grades six through eight, and I will point this out because like I just said there, there was still a gap even though this was a smaller gap, and the only subject that doesn't have that gap is really is that U.S. History. But this, looking at our reading language arts in grades six through eight, again, pointing out, you have 4% and 3%, and then 12% for African-American and Hispanic students. And so I am eager to see this gap. In fact, I've studied the data actively since 2015. I'm not sure we've ever not had a gap in performance between African-American and Hispanic students and white and Asian students. It was at least 10 points, so maybe in some ways, I'd really like to see the data with trends over time. Maybe this is actually coming down because we're at like eight, seven now, and that would be amazing and wonderful to see. And then I'll ask a question around ESL. This has actually been a, it's been kind of a burning or heavy question on me for a lot of years, and I've never really, maybe it's the moment now where it's actually kind of time to ask the right questions or look at the right action within our programs. So I would be intrigued to understand. And there was some data that Linda had done with the new statistician about a year ago that started to dig into which kids had been with us long-term and had not had success ever in the time we had them, and they were long-term students. And ESL students stood out like a big sore thumb on that data. I'm sure y'all pored over that data and did all these things. So this number right here, I'm intrigued because I'm not sure that what the research says is best practice for native language use and how long we allow students support in their native language and like in a bilingual program. I feel like our practice is completely opposite of what the research says, and I'm intrigued to see if these kids, these 22% of ESL students, were with us through elementary school? You know, what do we know about their reading level in Spanish? And when did they transition to English reading? And do they have both? Do they have access to that iceberg theory of native language support earlier on where they could show up long-term? I've been afraid that we would see this data. It probably was always there, but now is the most, like the most recent evidence with this, like how about these 22%? Which of these kids were with us and we didn't give them either, basically? We rushed them to English, maybe didn't give them enough native language support, and now they're going to struggle when they get to the cognitive demand of middle school? So I'd really like us to deep dive into that and see what we know about their programming that had the amount of language, native language support, and then how that added up to this 22%. Because obviously, that group continues into, you know, different areas. Science is a little bit better as far as compared to special ed, but I do see that that ESL group obviously is a, is a, something we're going to struggle with even if you get to English one. It was good, right, but still at 19%. And then my next question gets to that ESL group now in English two. So now we're talking 16-year-olds, 10th grade, maybe 11th, maybe 12th. How many of these kids are long-term ESL students, like they can't get out of the cycle of the LPAC and the LEAP process, the ESL label, or the ED, or EB, or all the names we have changed it to over the years? Are they stuck and will never because of the requirements of the writing? And now that we're more focused on writing and the other grade levels, is this going to be something that maybe we'll see a trend over time? It's going to be a little better for English language learners or not? So they are a group I've had on my heart probably since 2015, and I just really would like us to take, dig and understand if they're not making it in our system over time, why? And then really dig into the science of it and do it well. I know that it's hard with staffing, and I know it's hard with managing program. I know it's a lot of faith to let a kid be in native language for a while and then switch, I mean, like to know that they're going to score in English. I think we've played games with numbers as a system, not, I mean, it's natural because we're judged upon our test scores, but we've averaged the ESL kids in very nicely to where our total passing rate right here, for example, we have, you know, at approaches or higher, 89%. So we can look at a nice total 89%, but when we disaggregate that, 12% of African-American kids, 14% of Hispanic kids, and 35% of ESL kids and 34% of special ed kids are still not meeting. So this is how we became the largest A-rated school district that still had 13,353 kids who weren't reading even at the approaches level because the average, the law of averages kicks in by the numbers. And so I'm super excited. I think you're a brilliant brain in education, and I would really, I know that you, over there, even your eyeballs, you're like, yep, yep, yep. So I'm excited to see as we work as a team together, what can we do to look and make that change? And I will say this, I'm super proud of this board, work done through these ladies on the ASVP committee to set the reading goal, because I also know, as soon as you pay attention to every kid who left the grade level before not reading, and you pay attention to the fact that we're all work together as a whole community to make sure kids can read, guess what's going to happen? All of it comes together because reading is clearly the key to the math test, the science test, the social studies test, English one, two, and RLA, that's obvious. So thank you for letting me ask those tough questions, your big ones, being first day at the dais, but what I know about this team and this district is we figure it out. And so I'm excited to, to see and get these constant reports. And I want to thank Teresa and Dr. Killian for, and the whole committee, everyone, Christine and I, everyone who's there at our ASVP and our other committees for your incredible work, again, structuring the goals, structuring these reports, bringing it to us. It's so good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? See, and then we'll move on to five B. Thank you very much. Administration Provider Update on the progress of Strategic Plan Guardrail Three, Community Relations. We have several presenters. I'm not sure you can start, but Teresa?
Okay, good evening. We're excited to bring this report to you. Guardrail Three focuses on the district's efforts to continually improve our community relations through enhanced communication measures, increasing the engagement of our stakeholders and providing opportunities for input and feedback. Additionally, this area of the strategic plan includes strategies for generating additional revenue for the district. You see the individual performance objectives listed on this slide, but I'll point out that we'll not cover these in the order that they are listed just to minimize the transition between our different presenters. And this will be a comprehensive and somewhat lengthy report, but it does provide and include, I think, valuable information for you and for our community. So now I'll turn over the first performance objective to Dawn Tryon, our Director of Community Engagement.
Good evening. I am thrilled to share the community engagement's role in Guardrail Three tonight. I'll start with Performance Objective 3.1, Implement a Comprehensive Marketing Plan to Increase Elementary Enrollment and to Recruit Teachers. We all know the current challenges of securing and retaining teachers, and our marketing campaigns are a critical component in attracting quality teachers. Our department was formed over 10 years ago, and it was, had two main goals when we created the department, and one was to make revenue through advertising with our business partners, and the second was to create a marketing plan for the school district. And so we use the dollars, the revenue that we bring in from our business partners in advertising to pay for a marketing plan to market our district. To support our marketing plan, I meet monthly with Freed, our marketing firm, to discuss the district goals, timelines, budgets, strategies, and metrics to measure campaign efforts. Our Fall Enrollment Campaign aims to encourage parents to enroll their children in CFISD at an early age and inform new move-ins of the benefits that CFISD schools offer. Our goal is to increase student enrollment with a more proactive approach and to maintain consistent messaging to prevent enrollment declines and to demonstrate CFISD's superiority over charter and private schools by effectively communicating CFISD, the path to amazing, for every student through compelling creative messaging. Our strategy was to engage both the total market and Hispanic market through targeted initiatives designed to reach parents of elementary-age children living in CFISD. Our marketing tactics included Pandora ads, digital video campaigns, community impact print ads, Cypress Lifestyle print ads, e-blasts, and social media posts. Now I will share some data from the various marketing mediums. Our Pandora ads were non-skip-able and always included a display companion banner, as you see on the screen. You can also see that the ad reached more than 150,000 listeners, with nearly 30,000 of those being in the Hispanic market that it intended to reach. Let's listen to our Pandora ad now.
Considering a pre-K program for your little one, we hope you'll consider CFISD Pre-K. You'll be amazed by how much your child will grow in just one year. Our loving teachers help them become more independent and self-confident. Our curriculum is designed to spark their curiosity and creativity, and in pre-K, they'll develop a love for learning that will impact their entire educational journey. To enroll, visit cfisdprek.net. CFISD Pre-K, the path to amazing.
Our email blast deployments were sent to prospective parents within the CFISD district as reinforcement to encourage enrollment and preregistration. We targeted 42 ZIP codes featuring a high presence of children, amounting to 297,622 deliveries. Our send-out dates were over the summer, June 26th, August 2nd, August 20th, and then after the holiday, September the 4th. You can see examples of the number of emails opened from the first two send-outs this fall. In addition, a paid social media campaign was intended to reach targeted audiences outside of our current Facebook followers. The creative content was a slideshow on Facebook and Instagram, and you can see the impression, impressive results from this campaign. Targeting was limited to those living within the boundaries and outside the boundaries of CFISD, ages 25 to 65-plus, and then anytime they had a search engine that related to primary education, school, homeschool, private school, early childhood, related searches, clothing, children's clothing, children's toys, that captured that person and they received our ad. We are currently working on our spring campaign initiatives. Tuition-based pre-K will launch on January 21st, we're excited about that, followed by our teacher recruitment campaign. We all know the importance of hiring the best of the best so we can ensure good, quality first instruction. Internally, our staff also markets our district. In order to promote consistent district-wide messaging, Strategy Three provides resources to campus staff to enhance the path to amazing theme. To support this strategy, the Communication Department has assisted our marketing efforts by building a Path to Amazing toolkit on the employee intranet where campuses can access photo frames, email, and social media headers to promote the path to amazing. Additionally, our campuses with digital marquees do an incredible job of advertising ongoing district-level initiatives like monthly character traits, transportation hiring, and free meals. This semester, we plan to roll out some personalized and animated Path to Amazing, and you can see in the slide, Farney has a head start on that already. The engagement of CFISD stakeholders is critical to effectively spread our messaging also. Performance Objective 3.2 promotes the buy-in and engagement from our parents, business partners, and our community members. CFISD continually strives to build meaningful relationships and opportunities to engage students and staff with our most valued, with our most valued stakeholders, parents, business partners, volunteers, mentors, and community members. Now I will share a few ways our department engages the community. Our district hosts an annual business expo in August, providing face-to-face networking with numerous business partners who have joined in our commitment to improving our district and our community. In addition, we host an annual fundraising vendor fair to provide campus administrators, PTO chairs, and booster clubs with the opportunity to meet approved vendors who support campus fundraising efforts. Additionally, our monthly business partners have increased in attendance, which has increased our revenue. Campuses encourage parents to engage with fellow parents and school staff through involvement with our PTO groups, our VIPs boards, and our booster clubs to enhance the culture and climate of campuses. Also, we welcome community members to our quarterly Community Connect meetings where we, where pertinent topics in education and community topics are shared and provide attendees with the opportunity for discussion and feedback to demonstrate the district's willingness to involve our stakeholders. And on the screen, you can see our next meeting is tomorrow, January 14th. Hope you can attend. Our business partner meetings have led to some successful adoptive school partnerships. You can see some of the growth in our partnerships from fall of last year to current. Of our 96 campuses, 87 have now been adopted by a business partner, so we are moving on up there. Our goal, of course, is 100%. We love the opportunity to welcome parents and volunteers on campus at all levels to support the needs and goals of each campus. At the elementary level, we have PTOs and VIP boards. Our middle schools have VIPs boards, and our high schools have booster clubs and VIPs boards. We currently have 78 booster clubs across the 12 high schools in addition to VIPs boards in order to host staff appreciation and other events. And you can see the revenue brought in from the booster clubs, over $10 million last year. Our business partners are amazing, is what that means. That's incredible. A partnership that not only benefits campuses but impacts students' lives is our mentoring program. We ramped up our monthly mentoring training by advertising trainings on social media. Here you can see the increase in mentor hours from fall of last year to fall of this year. And each year, we count on our volunteers to commit time on the first two days of school to serve as a bus buddy, helping our youngest riders reach their drop-off points. You can see we've consistently secured 200-plus volunteers each of the past two years, and it has become a positive PR event for our community. And a huge community event, Lace Up Your Running Shoes, we are thrilled to host the 11th Superintendent's Fun Run. On March 29th, proceeds from the fun run have steadily increased year after year, benefiting the Cypher Educational Foundation and graduating seniors from our 12 high schools. And you can see when we started this event in '14, we had 3,500 attendees and raised $28,000, and two years ago, we had close to 12,000 attendees and raised $237,000. So it's a fabulous community event. We also host the CFISD Fundraising Vendor Fair, which is a premier opportunity for district-approved fundraising vendors and businesses to connect directly with the decision-makers who drive fundraising efforts for our campuses, PTOs, and booster clubs. CFISD presently has over 250 vendors represented on the approved fundraising vendor list. And finally, I will share the details for Performance Objective 3.4, where we were tasked to secure additional revenue options to support the current budget. So with a district our size that features extraordinary facilities, who wouldn't want their name on one of our facilities? With a desire to provide naming right opportunities for our loyal business partners, we created an RFP, facilitated the interview process, and selected a consulting firm to support our efforts to maximize our revenue opportunities. The Superlative Group was awarded the bid and provided us Phase One, the Asset Inventory and Valuation Report last week. We just received the draft of this report, and we will provide the results to you as soon as we have it compiled. And on this, the next slide, you'll see the different facilities. CFFCU contract ends in 2026, so we'll be renaming the field at the Berry Center. We will have naming rights set for the VPAC, for the field at Priggin Stadium, the Nattatorium, and the Conference Center in the Berry Center. So great opportunities there to come. We also developed three additional options for advertising in order to increase the revenue from our department. These include the Athletic Sports Complex banners at all 12 high schools. Nattatorium ads are on the electronic scoreboards in the Nattatorium, and then we also added ads to the electronic tickets for football season and for all of the graduations this This fall, our existing advertising options generated $415,245 from July to present. Thank you, and now I will turn the presentation over to Joel Wickerly, Director of Communication.
Good evening. Strategy Two of Performance Objective 2.1 or 3.1 is to integrate campaign elements and dates in the communication calendar. Here is a glimpse of our communication calendar with project types that we color-code for reference. Integrating marketing elements throughout our everyday communication strategies brings intentionality to key messaging. So some of this messaging takes place on our district Facebook page, where we share video features like Destination District or photo posts that will drive engagement and buy-in for CFISD. Tying into that effort is Performance Objective 3.3, Implementing a Comprehensive Plan to Increase Stakeholder Input and Feedback. Strategy Six is Tailor-made for Communication. Identify opportunities to share positive stories and facts with CFISD staff and the community, and encourage positive community outreach. So one of our Strategy 6 is tailor-made for communication. Identify opportunities to share positive stories and facts with CFISD staff and the community, and encourage positive community outreach. So one of our initiatives has been to recognize Path to Amazing ambassadors at the elementary, secondary, and department levels during each monthly district leadership team meeting. This helps incentivize positive promotion of the district on social media by staff. We also have regularly featured program highlights every week to help bring more attention to the positive things happening on campus. The bite-sized video content helps illuminate classrooms like this spotlight on high school theater. If you look at our Facebook page, social media metrics reveal a yearly boost in total impressions, engagements, engagement rate, and our total audience. The mid-week messages from Dr. Killian to staff help draw attention to student and staff achievements, while less frequent messages from the superintendent to the whole community share important information to that audience. I will now turn it over to Leslie Francis, Assistant Superintendent of Communication and Community Relations, for Strategy 1.
Good evening. You may recall that last school year, we began incorporating a district-wide committee application as a standard part of our process for selecting committee membership in order to improve transparency in the process. While every membership application is not exactly the same, many of the fields such as ZIP code or high school, gender, ethnicity, and current role seek information that can be used to select diverse and geographic representation on the committee. We are also able to determine a breakdown of our applicants before making selections. For example, this pie chart shows the distribution of current parents of students versus community In another example, this question asked which industry the applicant worked in if employed. An additional effort to improve transparency included posting all district committee information on the website. This included the goals and mission of each committee, committee contact information, the application link, and/or deadline for applying, the list of members, meeting dates, agendas, and presentations. I will now turn it over to Teresa Hall, Chief of Staff.
Strategy 3 focused on the work that we have done around the teacher time study. You will recall that the 2324 Board Monitoring System included a target objective to conduct a teacher time study. We initiated this work in December of 2023 and contracted with Hanover Research to assist us. In an effort to define the scope of the study, we asked Hanover to assist us in identifying the tasks outside of providing direct instruction to students that contribute to the teacher workload and what challenges and areas need support. We also thought it was important to look at this by level, elementary versus secondary and core content versus electives. A district-wide survey to all teachers and the opportunity to participate in focus groups was the methodology Hanover Research utilized to gather the feedback on these areas I just mentioned. This work occurred in January of 2024. Based on the survey results and feedback from the focus groups, Hanover shared its capstone report of the study in April of 2024. The report identified recommendations around two primary themes: administrative workload and instructional planning and support. A common concern centered around compliance documentation for special programs such as 504, special education bilingual, and behavior incident reporting. Protecting teacher time with planning periods and teacher workdays and streamlining platforms and systems that teachers are required to use to document instructional content and plans was consistently expressed. Here you will see a brief timeline of our work on this project to date. It is important to note that the work is ongoing and will require continued focus and attention. After receiving the capstone report, we convened an advisory committee of principals and teachers from all levels to assist us in reviewing the results and prioritizing our action steps. Based on the capstone report and feedback from the committee, we started by focusing on the compliance documentation and lesson plans. We reviewed and updated our regulation on lesson plans to ensure no additional requirements were included, and reviewed the updates with principals for any modifications or changes needed at the campus level. In the area of compliance documentation, we began by reminding principals before the school year began to review the master schedule to ensure no one class and/or teacher was unintentionally carrying a higher number of students enrolled in special programs that require compliance documentation. Additionally, we compiled data by campus on the special education caseloads and did an extensive review of our compliance documentation, including documents that are required by law, who receives the documents, and who is responsible for documenting. This spring, we plan to review and evaluate the various platforms utilized by teachers to address any inefficiencies and duplications of efforts. Additionally, we plan to conduct a follow-up survey to evaluate our progress. And again, this is work that will continue and be ongoing. Strategy 4 focuses on the new Leadership CFISD program. Leadership CFISD is a unique, year-long opportunity for parents and community members to gain insights into our school district, connect with fellow community leaders, and contribute to the success of our students and schools. We utilize the district application process to solicit potential candidates. We received approximately 360 applications and selected 76 participants. The year-long program is designed for participants to develop knowledge and understanding of the district and the complexity of operations. Our goals for the participants to gain, our goals for the participants included to gain new perspectives, develop lasting relationships with district leaders, other parents and community members, and become ambassadors for CFISD. The participants meet monthly from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM to learn about different topics and areas of the district. When appropriate for that month's topic, we schedule buses to take the group to the designated locations to experience and see the department's operations firsthand. The program will conclude with a graduation ceremony and presentation at the May Board Strategy 5, with a focus on continued improvement, we want to ensure Dr. Killian and the leadership team receive input and feedback from our stakeholders. The list you see on the screen is not an exhaustive list, but highlights some of the key opportunities that occurred at the district level during the fall semester or are scheduled throughout this year. Again, this will be a continuous and ongoing process. Strategy 2, we began discussions about offering tuition-based pre-K last spring during the budget reduction process. We determined a fall implementation was unrealistic as we needed more time to research all the different facets involved in offering the program. Although tuition-based pre-K was discussed during the budget reduction process as a potential revenue-generating measure, it will not generate significant revenue for the district, as TEA limits what districts may charge for tuition. The law states that a district may not adopt a rate that is higher than necessary to cover the program's cost and is required to submit a proposed rate to TEA for approval. However, with a district our size, we will see some efficiencies in offering the program. It is also important to note that we do not generate any ADA for tuition-free pre-K students. Tuition-free pre-K students generate half-day ADA, but that is not true for tuition-based pre-K students. We see this program as having a long-term impact. We hope that it captures students as early as pre-K and that CFISD will become the education option parents choose through graduation, and we will see an increase in our enrollment through those years, especially at the elementary level. We're seeing declines in our elementary enrollment that will, in the long term, impact the entire district. Additionally, with declines in elementary enrollment, this program provides the opportunity to maximize the capacity at underutilized campuses. And finally, we believe that tuition-based pre-K is a great recruitment and retention strategy. I will now turn the presentation to Dr. Gori, Chief Academic Officer.
Tuition-based pre-K is an approved program. It's not an approved program by TEA, but we are allowing it for our students. We do have eligibility criteria for pre-K students. The eligibility for a pre-K student is you must be four years old by September 1 and meet the criteria enlisted on the screen: limited English proficient, economically disadvantaged, homeless, your parent in active duty, or injured or killed in service, parents eligible for Star of Texas Award, those are first responders who have been injured or killed in the line of duty as well, and if you have a Department of Family and Public Services case opened or closed, you are eligible for free pre-K in the state of Texas. For our students who qualify by language, a home language survey is provided to these students. If it is determined that a language other than English is spoken at home, the students are provided with a home language survey to indicate if they qualify for pre-K based on home language survey. The eligibility is good for one year. If a student qualifies, the LPAC Committee meets to determine the student's identification as EB, Emergent Bilingual, or ESL. If a student qualifies, parent permission must be obtained to accept or deny the program. We will provide the same, we will provide the same high-quality curriculum that we currently provide to our pre-K students for tuition-based students as well. The state requires progress monitoring for our pre-K program, which we use the circle assessment, and we have the same student-teacher ratio, one teacher and one pair in every classroom. And we will continue to evaluate the program based on student data. I will now turn the presentation over to Scott Tucker, Director of General Administration.
For our paid pre-K program, starting in the 2526 school year, students must be four years old on or before September 1 to be eligible. The program will be offered at all CFISD elementary campuses depending on space availability. If a student's home campus is full, we will offer space at an alternate campus within the district, again on a space-available basis. Parents of paid pre-K students will be required to complete a parental agreement outlining the important details of the program, including attendance expectations, hours of operation, late pickup requirements, payment requirements, and other specific guidelines for the program. Tuition rates for the paid pre-K program were carefully set after evaluating the limits established by the Texas Education Agency and considering the efficiencies we have in offering the program in CFISD. The monthly tuition will be $650 for both resident and non-residents in the community and $600 for CFISD employees. A $50 registration fee will be required for all interested applicants. The Community Programs Department, led by Nadia Stovall, will manage the payment system, and for families who fall behind on payments, the principal of each campus will be notified so individualized discussions can take place to address these instances of non-payment. To ensure that we're prepared to facilitate both the new, sorry, both the transfers and registration process that will underpin this new offering, Information Services and Student Services are working collaboratively to revise our current registration platform. The use of an existing platform offers efficiency and familiarity to our community and district employees. With the redesign, we'll continue to focus on a convenient, quality experience for both our internal and external customers in a process that can be completed without having to visit a campus and is accessible fully online 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This also allows our campuses and departments to provide relevant updates to families throughout the process. The hiring process will remain consistent across CFISD. Our boundaries, projections, and planning team will release enrollment projections earlier than in prior years, ensuring principals have ample time to hire the most qualified candidates. Once our enrollment projections are shared, Dr. Stewart and her team receive these, and they'll release initial staff allocations to our campus principals for pre-K teachers and paraprofessionals. Any additional pre-K positions that are required due to increases in our paid pre-K enrollment will be allocated on a timeline similar to Title I, Special Education, and CompEd positions. Certification requirements for our pre-K teachers will remain consistent with those already in place for our district pre-K staff, and our district paraprofessionals will also have an opportunity to earn extra compensation through Club Rewind and the new Club Rewind Sprouts program. Paid pre-K students that attend their zone campus will also be eligible for transportation services if they meet the guidelines established in the district's transportation plan. Students attending a pre-K campus different than their home campus will not be eligible for transportation services. I will now turn the presentation over to Nadia Stovall, our Director of Community Programs.
Good evening. Community Programs is excited to support the district's tuition-based pre-K initiative by introducing a new before-and-after-school care program specially designed for pre-K students, Clever Rewind Sprouts. This slide provides highlights and key features of this new program. Our opening, operating hours, beginning with morning care, will start at 7:15 AM, and our aftercare will operate until 5:30 PM. Clever Rewind Sprouts will be offered at all elementary campuses with full-day pre-K. Students will be hosted in designated art rooms or enclosed spaces within the cafeteria's line of sight. These spaces will be separate from the older Clever Rewind groups, providing a creative, focused, and structured environment tailored to pre-K needs. Rate for Clever Rewind Sprouts will be tiered based on the status of the applicant. The curriculum will include developmentally appropriate activities aligned with the needs of four-year-olds, fostering growth, social, emotional, and cognitive domains. A low ratio of 1 to 15 will ensure personalized attention in a safe environment. With Clever Rewind Sprouts, we strive to support the growth of our pre-K students while making quality care accessible and affordable for families. Now I will turn it over to Leslie Francis, Assistant Superintendent for Communication and Community Relations.
As Ms. Tryon mentioned earlier in the presentation, the marketing campaign for tuition-based pre-K will kick off on January 21. The campaign will include a dedicated webpage with a friendly URL, our robust district communication channels such as social media, school marquees, school and district newsletters, press releases, and we will also add some paid advertising such as targeted and boosted ads on social media and Pandora audio commercials. Once the registration date has been finalized, the ads will be modified to include registration links and dates. I will now turn it back over to Scott Tucker.
Strategy 3 of Performance Objective 3.4 is to expand outside use of facilities. Starting in July 2024, CFISD expanded its facility's availability for outside use, adding new options that were previously unavailable. These updates allowed us to offer access to more spaces, enhancing our ability to compete with other local venues while creating greater opportunities for our community to utilize our state-of-the-art facilities. Year-over-year comparisons for outside facility use from July to November 2023 and July to November 2024 do show a decrease in the total number of hours our facilities were used. However, this decline can be attributed to several factors. Changes in availability due to revised school start dates shifted many of our events into June, which was at the end of fiscal year 2023. Additionally, facility closures caused by natural disasters such as Hurricane Barrel, facility upgrades by the district also impacted rentals during this period. It's important to emphasize that while the total hours are down, overall rentals have not been lost. They are simply occurring in different months of the fiscal year, which will be captured throughout the 2425 school year. Despite the reduction in hours that you see, our Facility Use Department achieved a 40% increase in revenue from July to November 2024 compared to the same period from 2023. This increase is attributed to the implementation of a new pricing model introduced in July of 2024 that was aligned more closely with current market conditions. Furthermore, we welcomed 18 first-time users during this timeframe, with several of these utilizing spaces which were not previously available to our communities for outside facility use. I will now turn the presentation over to Nicole Williamson, Director of the Visual and Performing Arts Center.
Good evening. Strategy 5 of Performance Objective 3.4 is to maximize community rentals of the VPAC and Berry Center. The VPAC is used by a variety of groups from district events like performances and special presentations to celebrate the artistic achievement- presentations to celebrate the artistic achievements of students and bring families, teachers, and the community together. VPAC also extends beyond the school district, including performances from local churches, valets, graduations, and even comedy shows. District events are hosted by schools and groups within the district. The VPAC plays a crucial role in supporting the educational and cultural activities of the district. Based on client type, in-district events represent 30% of the VPAC reservations. However, based on room usage, district events utilize more space and more hours. The remaining 70% of the VPAC reservations is allocated to outside events, while the VPAC has more outside clients. These outside clients use fewer rooms and less time. Outside events come from a variety of external sources, including professional and performance groups, local churches, community organizations from outside the district. The VPAC offers a state-of-the-art venue that attracts a wide range of performances. Here is our current revenue to date with a breakdown of district, district support groups, outside-for-profit, and outside nonprofit. For our projected revenue for the remainder of the year, it's based on current events we have booked. In one year of fully opening, we are able to double our revenue, and we are still continuing to get requests for events, so there is still potential for more. Our strategies to increase revenue are to maintain and update a user-friendly website and active social media platform. With the social media platforms, we can advertise our current and future events. We will evaluate our current pricing and make sure that we are maximizing revenue while researching other venues to stay competitive. We will also consider light concessions to guests before endearing shows to help generate revenue to provide a better guest experience. Here are a few photos from some of the past events we have had. A local comedian, Chinadu, the Navy Band, and the Nutcracker, which drew in over 6,000 people in two days. We also had, over Christmas Eve, a local church, SciLife, that brought in 3,600 people in one day. Some of our future events is the Shinyu, February 15th and 16th. Shinyu is now the world's premier classical Chinese dance company. Some people fly from other countries to drive hundreds of miles to see it. Others see the same performance five and six times. Many say there are no words to describe it. You have to see it with your own eyes to find out. I will now turn it over to Devon Perry, Director of Berry Center.
Sorry about that. Here is an overview of the main types of events hosted at the Berry Center by both CFISD and non-district clients. The district uses include graduations, homecomings, proms, banquets, student performances, competitions, athletic events, district meetings, staff development events, and student award shows. It is important to note that the student events that we host benefit students in a wide range of school-student groups, including career and technology, fine arts, FFA, JROTC, in addition to athletic events. The most common non-district events are concerts, cheer, athletic events, vendor shows, graduations, theater performances, conferences, meetings, and banquets. This chart depicts the percentages of the 3,500 total room uses throughout the year from 2023-24 school year for both nonprofit and for-profit uses, as well as the district uses. Even though there were 87.5% district use of the Berry Center, many of these district uses included revenue-generating opportunities through concession sales, catering, and rentals to student social events. The main ways Berry Center generates revenue is through building and equipment rentals, parking fees on ticketed events, labor for setup, striking, and working the event, as well as food and beverage needs for catering and concession events. Here are the revenue figures from the 2023-24 school year. At the Berry Center, our current revenue for this year is $1.5 million, and we're projected to surpass $3 million in revenue again this year. The Berry Center will continue to evaluate pricing structure and rental opportunities to maximize our revenue. We'll also work with the Communications Department to increase our social media presence to market the use of the Berry Center to new clientele. We are in the process of selecting a vendor for alcohol sales for future non-CFISD events, and we'll continue to work with local business partners with our concessions to offer a wider variety of options and increased revenue sales. I'll now turn it over to Nadia Stovall, Director of Community Programs.
I'm back. Performance Objective 3.4, Strategy 6, maximize staffing and enrollment for Clever Rewind and the five Early Learning Centers. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief overview of our department and its contributions to CFISD. The Community Programs Department was established in 2010 with a dual purpose: to provide essential services to our community and to support the economic well-being of Cypher ISD. Over the years, we have grown to serve a vital role in our district by offering high-quality programs that benefit students, employees, and families alike. Under our umbrella, we currently operate two key programs: Clever Rewind, our before-and-after-school care program available at all 59 elementary campuses, and the Early Learning Centers. These centers provide care for the children and grandchildren of Cypher ISD employees from six weeks old to four years old, ensuring a supportive environment for our staff and families. Our department is proud to employ approximately 371 dedicated staff members. Since our establishment, we have contributed approximately $16.8 million to the district, reflecting both the impact and the sustainability of our programs. This slide provides a comprehensive look at our enrollment data from fiscal years 2021 to 2025. As the graph illustrates, enrollment in both of our programs has shown consistent year-over-year growth, despite challenges related to staffing and operational constraints. A notable achievement is a 37% reduction in the Clever Rewind waitlist since the start of the school year, reflecting our ongoing efforts to address demand and streamline access to the program. Additionally, the growth of our Early Learning Centers has been remarkable over the past four years. Highlights include the opening of Andre ELC at Andre Elementary, which has expanded our reach, and recently, the significant expansion of Telgi ELC, which nearly doubled its capacity from 90 students to 177 students, allowing us to serve even more families. To ensure we maximize enrollment in our programs, our HR department actively focuses on advertising and recruiting qualified applicants through a variety of strategies. Our job postings remain active year-round and are refreshed each semester to maintain visibility on the district's career page. We partner with the Communications Department to promote our job openings through multiple channels, including social media platforms, school marquees, and even advertisement on buses. We participate in job fairs and conferences to showcase our programs and highlight the career opportunities available within community programs. These efforts are designed to attract talented individuals who are committed to supporting the success of our students and families. We deeply value the feedback from our CFISD community and use it as a tool to continuously improve our programs and services. Each year, we distribute a survey to gather insights and data that guide our efforts. This slide highlights key findings from last year's parent survey. In the overall satisfaction category, the majority of parents rated our services as good or excellent. In the staff performance category, parents overwhelmingly rated our staff as good or excellent. In the registration system, feedback on our registration system also showed strong, good, or excellent ratings. In the communication category, the majority of parents rated our communication as good or excellent. In the customer service category, our customer service received high marks, with most ratings in the good or excellent categories. Parents were largely satisfied with the activities we provide, with feedback predominantly falling into the good or excellent categories. These results reflect our ongoing commitment to excellence and highlight areas where we are succeeding while also identifying opportunities for growth. Strategy 7, explore new programming options for Clever Rewind. This year, our team has focused on identifying opportunities to boost revenue by introducing additional programs in after-school enrichment activities. This slide highlights two of our exciting new initiatives. We've partnered with Soccer Starts to offer sports enrichment programming at Byrd and Hemingway Elementary Schools. This pilot program is scheduled to begin next month. If successful, we plan to expand the program to additional campuses in the future. Pre-K Before and After School Care Program with Clever Rewind Sprouts. This program is set to launch in the 25-26 school year and will be available at all elementary campuses. Thank you. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
I know it'd be a lot of questions, but before we begin, I just want to say thank you very much for all y'all do. Y'all are the tip of the spear for our community, for our staff, and for our students, especially like with the Early Learning Center, hear so much about that. So, thank you so much. I have a bunch of questions, but I'll refer first to my right, Justin.
Thank you again, everybody, and I echo President Henry's comments. Thank you for the very, very thorough, in-depth, and very helpful information. I know a lot of these topics are on the forefront of a lot of folks' minds, so we appreciate all your time and effort and rehearsal that went into this, and so, we really appreciate it. I know there's a lot there. I know plenty of us have lots of questions. I'm going to limit mine to just one or two questions for this evening. Don, I have a question about the firm that we procured for the advertising. So, we've procured a firm for fundraising. Can you go back and again, repeat? What are they currently reviewing right now, and what are the deliverables we're asking from them?
So, our firm, Freed Marketing, we put out an RFP, and they were selected as our marketing and advertising firm. And right now, they're currently working on our pre-K campaign, and then they're also working on our teacher recruitment and retention campaign. And so, they're sending drafts of the pre-K campaign, the graphics, the theme, "Hooray for Pre-K." And we are also looking at our ads in the Cypress Lifestyle Magazine and our Community Impact, and then, of course, our Pandora ads. So, we're in the planning stages of two very important campaigns.
Did you mention they were in the process of evaluation as well? Did I hear that correctly? Like, they were...
Evaluating...
Overall revenue generation, revenue potential. Did I infer that from some of your comments?
Not from Freed. Naming rights, that's the superlative group.
That's the one I was referring to earlier, in which we were expecting a report from them right about now. That's the firm I was referring to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about Freed. We have a couple firms. Yes, the superlative group.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
They have completed the initial evaluation, provided that, and now we are at a stopping point until we get back with them.
Okay. And so, the deliverables, have we asked them to give us a revenue projection? Is that one of the deliverables we've asked from them? And so, what's our timeline? When do we expect to hear from them, and when do we expect to have some of that information for the public?
Soon. As soon as our committee meets, we had a committee that's been through this process. We started back in May, and so now we are ready to meet to go over that data. We were provided that data last Monday, and we have not met yet as a committee to kind of analyze it and go over the data ourselves. And once we do that, we'll be able to communicate that information with you.
Great. Well, yeah, we're all really excited to hear about that, and we just really appreciate all your efforts on that. And Nicole, I have a question about the VPAC as well. I mean, for many of us, the VPAC is just a jewel of the district, and we see that there's so much opportunity with it. One of the things, so when we looked at the revenue breakdown, I think I wrote down that about 6.9% is outside sources. Do we have a target percent that we would like to hit for the VPAC from outside revenue sources? And do we foresee a cap that, before we get to the point where we start interfering with our district needs for the VPAC?
Currently, we haven't had an issue with that. We have all, we get a calendar from Fine Arts, and so, we pre-book their things and block their dates out, and so, we hold those dates, and then we fill in any open gaps. So, anything that's not utilized for them, then we fill it with anything else. And some of that is still district things as well. It just may not be an all-district thing. It could be a one-off for a school, like we had Salliards, so it just depends on the event.
Do we have a target percentage that we'd like to hit for outside revenue sources or outside groups for the VPAC? Because currently, if I read it, we're at 6.9, but is that something we've looked into yet?
No, we really did not establish a target for that. I think as we go through this first year, we'll start to establish some benchmark data and understand the balance of how much utilization is needed for district events and campus events, and then what we can open it up to. And it was just kind of like the Berry Center. It just took us time to get in a groove and a pattern to understand what the usage would look like. And I think once we really are able to fully launch all of the marketing materials about the opportunities at the VPAC for outside groups, I think we'll see our usage increase with outside groups tremendously.
Makes perfect sense. Well, again, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very thorough and very helpful, and thank you for all your efforts.
Anyone else on this end?
I just want to tell everyone, thank you for the outstanding presentation and also for the hard work each for this year. You guys have done a tremendous job. So, we're on pace to double what we took in last year, establishing benchmarks. And what I'd like to ask is, for future years, are we going to kind of get a breakdown on this biannually, I guess? Where it'd be July through December, and then maybe January through June? Is that what we're maybe targeting?
We have it listed in the strategic plan to report twice a year. Correct.
Outstanding. I know I've talked to Scott Tucker personally on some of the events and obviously facility rentals. So, Scott, great job so far, and looking for growth in the future year.
My left, questions?
I just want to say thank you again for your professionalism, for your expertise. We are so blessed in Cypher ISD to have such incredible staff that provide community programming, community engagement opportunities, our exceptional communications and marketing groups, as well as exceptional childcare for our families, parents, and for our staff for before-school and for our littles. So, thank you for all you do.
I echo a lot of the sentiments that you've heard already. Outstanding job by every area for the work that you're doing in promoting CyFair to the community, to the district, to our staff, to our students. And I'm excited to see that the revenue has increased and that I believe that will continue. And I do believe that has been a collaborative effort between the board and the cabinet and the groundwork that y'all have done. It has been exciting to see that we were hoping revenue would increase, and it looks like we're on track for that, and that's with everybody touching their area with their expertise, and so I want to thank y'all for that and look forward going to Shinyun and doing some other activities in the district as well to showcase everything and to also offer a solution to our families in the district with pre-K. Well done.
Similar, truly outstanding group of professionals, very well-presented, great summary, and I have a few areas of positive reinforcement, a few questions. I wanted to mention, congratulations to get 87 of the 96 schools adopted. I know that's been a real goal that we have. Each campus will feel that way. I know as campus visits, talking with principals, that's something that makes them feel appreciated and supported. So, great work, and I look to this last one's closing and a plea to the community, anyone out there who wants to adopt a school. So, great job. I had critical questions about the PTO and VIPS boards, and that changed because one of the things that's been critical to me is just exactly what was part to be presented. How do we really make sure that we're engaging and involving and giving all parents and community stakeholders an opportunity to be involved? So, I think I understood. I thank you, Ms. Tryon, for answering some of the questions about those places. And having been served on Title I campuses, I understand the structure. So, I really am, hope to see that even if it's a PTO or it's a VIPS board, whichever it is, that there's a continued increase in the number of parents who are participating actively with the campus, understanding that, and also appreciation to the campus secretaries who take on the financial role. That's extra work. I know how hard that job is to, and then to manage the finances for that parent group so that they can do things to serve their school. So, thank you, though, for answering that in such a way. I do have a question about the booster clubs. I'm impressed, there are 78. I wonder how many parents that encompasses, because I do always have that concern at middle school and high school that there aren't, for the students who maybe aren't the most engaged in some of the activities and stuff at campus, how do we help those parents?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, we do have 78 booster clubs across our 12 high schools, and those booster clubs are a broad spectrum, not just athletic booster clubs, but in the fine arts, we have cheer, we have drill team, we even have a robotics booster club at one of the schools. In terms of numerical value, we do have a rough estimate on how many people are involved, but since it changes over each year, there's a challenge there in trying to make sure we document. One thing that we do know...
One thing that we do know is each of those booster club does require a executive board. You have to have the president, the treasurer, and the secretary, and then the staff sponsor serves as liaison with that booster club and the campus to kind of facilitate that. One of the things that the booster club does do through outreach measures is, obviously, our middle schools use VIPS boards, but as students transition from middle school to high school, those booster club parents will go and try to capture those students that are coming in to be a freshman volleyball player, or a band individual, or somebody jumping in theater, to introduce them to the booster club, to try to connect them early on, so that when they come to that next level, they already have that segue there in that regard. And we're always looking for new opportunities to have booster clubs so that groups can raise funds. Those groups that don't have a booster club, they still are not, they're still in a position to where they can raise money for their campus. It just goes by way of the campus activity account. So, anybody who links like that, a senior women organization or something like that, they still have the opportunity to raise funds, just as a booster club does. It just goes through the campus, similar to like our VIPS groups do.
I guess I still have that gnawing thought about the parents of the kids who are not engaged in an activity at school. We hope all could be, I really love us to count that. I know Tom Jackson comes in my head when I think about that, really quantifying how many kids are engaged in extracurricular and co-curricular and, you know, clubs activities. Anyway, I just challenge us to think through the families, because I do, I will say, I know, I started high school in COVID, so everything was a little bit of a mess, but this place for collective voice, for parents to think about the actual educational experience, not just the activity, to come together around supporting the campus goals, to have a chance for input and feedback that's not just around their students' activities. I think we're missing something, and I was not, it was, we actually lost, last year of middle school was COVID, so we didn't finish that, but I loved being a VIPS volunteer, running the color run, and being in charge of all those things. But I can tell you, again, it wasn't a collective whole of parents being able to support and think about the campus and what's best for it. And I've seen PTOs operate, or PTAs, whichever it was, in different places where they really thought about every kid at that campus. And the PTA, I remember it had the tagline, which was, when the parents who can't think about all the kids, basically, it wasn't, it was way more eloquent than that, but the idea was you had these advocating, active parents who were able to give the time and do the things, and they were there to make sure the campus got better for all kids. So, I feel like in elementary, we channel that, but in middle school and high school, do I know for a principal, it's another thing to manage? I do. But I just feel like there's still more we could do to capture and engage all families in their school, whether they're a volleyball player or not. So, I think that would be, and for the point not of making money, we have to think about revenue so much these days, and that'll be another question in a minute, but I do, for the point of engagement, voices and values and choice, and engaging everyone, especially in an environment of choice, I'm looking for each family to understand how they connect to their campus and feel like it's them and they're, they're represented there, and it's a, and it's part of their culture in their neighborhood, or their, you know, where their kid goes to school, so that they are, feel connected to it, where there's not another choice that is good. So, anyway, I challenge us to really look at that. How are we engaging all parents? What is that number? I would, I would love to know what you think. What's your guess at the percentage of parents who are actually involved in a booster club compared to the total number of parents in, let's say, Langham Creek High School and Aragon Middle School?
So, I can give you a pretty specific number, probably at Langham Creek. I know from being there as an administrator for a number of years, we had, on average, about 35% of our students that participated in an extracurricular program, meaning like athletics, cheer, band, booster. Normally, for those, parent involvement is about 50% on average of that. So, you have roughly a situation where you've got over 1,000 students that are part of that, so you've got probably 500 parents easily that are connected to that. One of the other things, as you mentioned, other elements to connect students and parents to the community, as you know, again, on that campus, we had over 90 other student groups that were outside of just the athletics and fine arts. So, you had different clubs and organizations, anime club, robotics clubs, all of those things that help connect kids. And one cool thing about those clubs is they also do host events that are for the community to come into the schools to see what's going on. And that's where our campus leadership does an excellent job, I feel like, of trying to put events together that really open the doors for our schools to serve as community centers, so that we do bring in those parents to let them see what's going on. And then concerted advertising efforts, not just at the district level, but also at the campus level with marquees and social media, and really a ambassador program of sorts at the campus levels to help promote what's going on.
So, just as an example, and I could not love Langham Creek High School more, it's the most amazing high school. The teachers there are maybe the very, sorry, other places, but so incredible in how they teach and how they build relationship with students. So, I have zero complaints, but I'll say, I was struck when I went to a counseling session night, and they were talking about college, you know, credits and going to college, and I left, and there were about seven or eight parents on the sidewalk. Our kids knew each other. One was dance, one was theater, mine was volleyball, someone else was, they all had their thing. And guess what? We were, it was like the first time we were having a conversation, and it was about, well, college-going process. We all had questions, we didn't know what to do. And so, I feel like there's, there's something about parents being able to be together, talking about setting goals for their kids and sending them to the next level that has power in it. So, I'm not sure exactly, it probably is to the superintendent more than anything, but how do we make sure, because you just said, that's not, if 35% of the kids are engaged in activity and only a 50% of the parents, we're missing so many parents that could be tapped and understood and better how. And then even looking at that for the, you know, the populations at our campuses and the families that are those families. So, I just feel like we have so much place we can grow there.
And I remember you mentioning this at another board meeting, and I did survey the middle school principals, that was your focus, right?
Thank you, yep.
And so, they had great things to say about all the things that they host on their campus, and you'd be surprised, as principals, how many times we invite parents on campus for meet the teacher, or curriculum night, or college evening. And lots of parents do come, but many parents have dual jobs. With a district of over 60% economically disadvantaged, a lot of parents simply can't. Like, when you're at a Title I campus, you offer pizza, you offer food, you want them to bring the babies and the siblings, and grandma, if she can come, we just want them on campus. So, our administrative staff is incredible, coffee with the principal, donuts with the principal, like, we want parents to come in. So, I just want you to know that we are always inviting parents, and we need committees, and we love our VIPS board and our PTOs, and parents love to serve. And as a working mom, I appreciated that stay-at-home mom that was the president of the PTO while my kid, because I couldn't do any of that, but I sure sent the money or I contributed. But, so, I think you would be surprised at the engagement with our families and other families that just can't because of their work schedule or because of a language barrier or that kind of thing.
I think it's amazing. I just want us to push for more and more, everyone who can, every family that can be engaged.
Of course, of course.
We all know, that's why you do all the work you do.
It's a partnership, absolutely.
It is what happens. Okay. Thank you so much on that. I do have another question around facility use and funds. Actually, when I was meeting a family that had a bus concern and a terrible walk to school, we thank you to math team and transportation team, and that was able to be addressed down Cypress North Houston. We walked all the way there, we could not walk back. She called her niece, her niece picked us up in a car, and the niece said, "Why do we have to pay to use the VPAC?" She's on the dance team at Sci Fair High School. And so, I thought, oh, that is a tricky one. Hearing you, and you answered this question the other day, so I'd like to see if you could share, like, what is that charge to student groups? So, this is a dance team at a high school. How do we differentiate that? And how could we, because another person, another citizen said, "It's like the Beltway." We were told the Beltway, as soon as we paid for the Beltway, we'd all be allowed to use for free, and I never did, and a foreign company owns it, right? So, just how does that look to where ultimately, student groups don't have to spend the money? Or what kind of cost, or how does that work?
So, currently, we have all district events, and so, those, they don't pay rent. Like, it's, everything's included. So, if it's a one-off, so, like, we had Salliards, they paid to have their choir, so they only pay for the labor, which is just for the setup for, for that, it was just the risers and things like that. So, they don't pay rent. So, they're just paying, it's a minimal fee.
Excellent answer. Thank you. Because I do think people worry about that, and that's, I mean, we have to pay to cover the expenses of what, something. And I do know, and I also want to say to the Berry Center, they've done such a fantastic of proms and homecomings, I can't believe how much the kids enjoy it, like, lots of kids go. So, how, first year, I was like, mm, how's this gonna go? Loved it. They loved their proms there, they love everything you guys do to create the ambiance, and so I know there's some cost expense, is that true at the Berry Center as well, as far as the cost model for our student groups and our student, our schools?
So, there's a few different, there's two different things that student groups can fit into. If it's a social event, such as a prom, a homecoming, a banquet, or a dance, they get a 50% discount on the rent, and they get discounted rental on equipment. They also pay the school district rate for catering, which is basically at cost. So, any of those social events, they're getting a far, far reduction, so they're able to get more for their money at the Berry Center. So, that's why they can afford all of those additional, you know, AV equipment and things like that here, versus if they go to a hotel downtown, they're probably just getting a DJ and, you know, limited snacks, versus here, you can eat, you know, dinner and have your desserts. Whenever it comes to the award shows, schools are allowed to have one free event at the Berry Center for a school-wide event, such as an award show. So, a lot of our schools do utilize that at the end of the season. We have very limited dates, because we have a large, large district, but then some of those schools find times to use it throughout the year, such as, I believe it's Woodard or another school uses it in December for their choir program. And that's, they get that one time free. After that, though, schools do have to use it. But then, any other things, such as like, a school district-wide thing, they get it for free. So, whenever we do things like middle school one-act play, high school one-act play, things like that, that encompass the entire district, they're not paying for those, because they're not selling tickets or generating revenue, so we give it to them for free.
Excellent. Thank you. You guys do such a high-quality job with that. Appreciate it. I do have, I did want to give positive reinforcement to the Early Childhood Team with the parent survey. You went at it, and I think we've listed a lot of ways. I love the focus throughout the presentation on input and feedback. That's been something that I've been really eager to really see, that we continue to get input and feedback. So, your parent survey, straight to them, how do we teach? How do you feel? Safe? Are you, I mean, it was so direct, and you got beautiful, congratulations on the outcomes, but also really on the process of asking, the tough questions, getting the feedback, and continuing to build it. So, that's excellent, and that's why you had to open up more and more space. And then, the challenge to that group would be that we could, how can we, as a board, make the conditions such that every single teacher, being chair of the Teacher Recruitment and Retention Committee, if a teacher wants childcare in our system, how could we make sure there's no waitlist? That you could know, if you want to come teach in Sci Fair, first of all, we have the best salaries, we're the best place to work, and yes, you can get childcare here. So, I just push that challenge out to the team. How can we do it so that everyone who works here could have an opportunity for childcare that needs it? And I think, poor Scott, don't you hate waiting to the end, Scott? But I would also say, the input and feedback opportunities, you said it like this, Teresa, I think you said something like to Dr. Killian and the administration. And so, I actually challenge us as a board, and maybe we can do it at the committee level, but we should be getting input and feedback. Our feedback is different. This input is on the programming and all the stuff that sits under the job of the superintendent. But we, as a board, our job is to listen to the voice of the community, what do people want? And as we enter into what looks increasingly like a choice environment is coming, we have to be talking to people, understanding what people want, what could we offer that we don't offer? How do we give it to them? How do we do it better than anyone else? Because I think we can do it better than anyone else. So, I challenge us as a board to get input and feedback and find out all the ways we can, and I ask the administration to help, that's part of how it looks, but we, the board, should be asking for input and feedback directly to us from the community in our role, as described in, you know, Texas Code. So, I look forward to hearing more and more from our community, because that way, we will be able to provide what everyone wants and be everyone's best choice. And so, anyway, again, thank you to everyone. Incredible. I'll make more comments to the Teacher Time Study and the, my Board Teacher Recruitment and Retention Ad Hoc Committee Report, but exceptional work, and the fact that they've already taken action, Teresa and your team, to relieve workload, administrative workload from teachers now, during, like, already. I can't wait to see the feedback on that, because that's huge, and so, congratulations, and thank you. We'll talk with more detail later. Thank you, Scott.
Part two? Go ahead, Lucas.
So, I'll keep my comments brief. I did have a chance to ask questions in our subcommittee prior to this, so, team, great job, as I said before. Outstanding. We covered a lot of material here. I think anybody would be hard-pressed to go to a different district and see the level of scope of services that the district provides, and how thoughtful and purposeful that we're being on reaching out to the community. So, it really, when we use the word "staff," that doesn't quite describe the dedication of the team members that we have in the roles that they're in. So, I was with Devin yesterday, actually. My daughter's in cheer, he had a cheer competition. It was a revenue-generating opportunity, I wanted to come see. And, you know, I asked a question, "Well, what time did you arrive?" So, he gave me the hour. And I know that it's the time that his team arrived, and the dedication that his team has. And just like at the VPAC, I was with, I think I went to every single one of those things that you listed. And the Navy Band Conductor, right before he kind of, he did his last piece, said, "You know, folks, I want to make a comment. The community, you don't know what you have here in the VPAC." He said, "I had tour and I perform in hundreds of halls across the nation." And he said, "This facility by far exceeds all of them." And Performance Manager, I've performed in many halls myself, I see the dedication that goes into it. So, thank you to you and your team, to our ELC group. Wow, that's very important. And I, I know how critical it is, and I agree with the strategy, to get our families into pre-K, to try to increase enrollment and get them introduced to Sci Fair. I believe in the mission, and I look forward to seeing what we can do. A couple of real quick questions. From a business partnership standpoint, I'm very curious what level of retention we have, because I suspect the profile is, a business partner comes into the district because they want to be here and they stay with the district.
Correct. We have an existing business partner contact base, and then we go out in the community, invite new business partners to our monthly meetings. So, we're a part of the Chamber of Commerce, and we attend all the ribbon cuttings that these new businesses are opening in our community, and we attend those, and then we engage and we invite them to our meetings, and we try to get them plugged in and connected to our district to support a campus. And so, we are, our numbers keep ticking up, but the growth, I think, just keeps, you know, and so, we, we were at a period where we didn't have a lot of business partners coming to our meetings, but I think with the new growth and with the additional expansion of Bridgeland, and we have been pleasantly surprised with our monthly meetings and our attendance. So, our business partners stay, they want to support the school district. And for them, when they invest and they advertise with us, it's very minimal dollars, considering, but every patient, every client, every customer is in this community for them. And so, they want to give back and they want to support.
Yep. And what comes to mind are things such as business partners contributing to facilities at schools. So, there's one of our elementary schools in the back of Fairfield. Wonderful school, and it's actually one of our very first playgrounds that was accessible for handicapped kids, and that was donated by a business partner who came in through your program, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
We can't do the things we do without our business partners. They are phenomenal. And you talk about booster clubs with Scott Tucker and our PTOs that generate revenue. A lot of that, of course, is parents, but a lot of that is our own community and our business partners in our backyard that support. All of our churches are phenomenal. I mean, amazing, provide amazing support for our campuses, and so, we, we are so grateful to our partners.
You know, we had a presentation this evening from all of your team, and it's such a, you guys are all the first-line responders to our community, and you're the face of our community in so many ways. community in so many ways. So thank you very much for the time and effort and the dedication that you guys put forth.
Thank you.
Go for the comments.
Just quick, Dawn, I'm in a similar business to you. So getting new customers, getting new business out there, I just want to tell you, great job this, this year so far. And also want to send a call out to the community for, to really recognize the business partners, the people that are advertising with us, that are spending their advertising dollars with us, to really consider doing business with these people because I can't think of a better, better way for the community to help the community. So thank you so much.
Hey, Dawn, real quick, while you're up there. Quick question on mentors.
Yes.
How many mentors, you talked about hours, I saw that. How many mentors do we currently have about right now?
Six hundred.
Okay. And you still want more, right?
Every month we train. So we just trained nineteen last month.
And how do, how do people become a mentor?
They register. So if they come to the campus and they want to serve or mentor or a counselor engages a parent and they want to mentor, they guide them to the webpage and they register as a mentor. It prompts a background check. And then they sit in a, a holding pattern in our Raptor system and we check the holding pattern and we invite all of them to the mentor training each month. We train them, which is required. And then we go back to Raptor, take the hold off, and then we email the mentor liaison on each campus saying, Dawn has just trained, she's eager to get started with a student. And so we do that monthly so that we can constantly get new mentors. A lot of times when we have adoptions, those companies or churches want to become mentors as well. So there might be a big influx of mentors because a church adopted or a restaurant or something of that nature. And so we want to make sure that we're training monthly to get them through those doors.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And just a shout out to Joel and Leslie as well. Thank you for bringing in the high school group to do a lot of your stuff. I know your team is very stretched and do a great job on a lot of your videos. If you don't mind, if you can send this PowerPoint to the board, I don't think I got it in my email, but did a great job on that. I really do appreciate it. And you have one more. Go ahead.
I, I meant to actually, I had so many positive notes and one was to the social media, those program highlights that you're doing are truly, I didn't want to leave you out. That was really engaging and I think they just spotlight so much of the choices that are here for our kids. So thank you so much for that. And I just, to Todd's question about the frequency of reporting on the revenue, we actually had a discussion in committee about these reports and it's so informative to hear from the people doing the job. And we had a discussion about getting safety and security, which is guardrail two or four? Two, right? Yeah, safety is always job number one to do the main job, right? So I just, to the same idea we discussed of having a frequent update just like this, so informative, so good, letting us know the different aspects of the safety and security and then having the community also have the opportunity as we're being updated. So I look forward to, I had said during the committee that I'd advocate for that, but I just see this, the power in being able to get the information with data and facts and to know all the aspects of what's going on. So I put that request out formally and I guess it can be taken to committee or to the president, maybe to the president. I'll, I'll have that with Scott just to see if we can get. On our reporting calendar, what does it currently say on guardrail two as far as how often we'll have updates to the boards on safety and security?
I think that one is twice a year also. I need to confirm that.
Yeah. You've, you've done wonderful work.
I do think it's twice a year, though.
I think I'd like to meet with the president and maybe, maybe the officers, I'm not sure. And we can see if that couldn't be a little bit more frequent at four times at least. This was incredible information. I appreciate you guys and your team. Fantastic job.
All right, moving on. Thank you very much. The board, we now review the following consent agenda items. During review of the following items, any board member may remove these items in which that time these items will be addressed on vote individually. If any board member has a question, please ask to be recognized and I'll recognize you. 6A, the board will consider approving minutes for December 5th, 2024. 6B, the board consider approving minutes of the December 9th, 2024 special call board meeting. 6C, the board consider approving the AFJRC TC agreement between Department of Air Force and CFISD. 6D, the board consider authorizing renewal of the clinician affiliation agreement with Texas Women's University. 6E, the board consider giving, granting a temporary construction easement to Harris County. 6F, the board consider approving construction proposals, contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize their superintendent to execute all the necessary documents related to such contracts. 6F1, SciLakes High School renovation. 6F2, Sci Ranch High School renovation. 6G, the board consider approving and authorizing superintendent entered miscellaneous professional services contracts related to following projects. 6G1, SciLakes High School renovation, HVAC test and balancing services. 6H, the board consider awarding bids, contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended post item. 6H1, broker services for employee benefits. 6H2, commodity processed food nutrition services. And 6H3, steamer and oven for nutrition services. We'll now proceed to non-consent agenda items. 7A, see, we have a couple of speakers. Let's begin with our speakers. The board consider approving on first readings, addition revisions or relations of district policies. 7A1, DCE local employment practices. 7A2, DCE compensation and benefits, leave and absences. 7A3, DGBA personnel management relations, employer complaints, grievances revised. And 7A4, FA, parents' rights and responsibilities add. Following speakers, if you would please move forward. We have seven. First speaker is Serena, probably mispronounces Arzu. You know, I have two minutes to speak. Serena, you here? Next speaker is Mo Hatfield, followed by Mark.
Hello, my name is Mo Hatfield and I'm a recent graduate from CFISD. I also happen to be non-binary. CFISD was my home for four years and I plan to return to teach here once I get my degree. The first adult I ever told about my gender identity was my high school theater teacher and a close second was one of my English teachers. They helped me get to a point where I felt comfortable enough to come out to my parents and I knew I had someone to go to if it went badly. Many trans and non-binary students also look to their school to be a supportive environment. According to a 2024 survey from the Trevor Project, a queer youth mental health resource organization that was formerly included on the CFISD's website resource page, found that forty-six percent of trans youth seriously considered suicide in the past year and fourteen percent attempted suicide. Sixty-five percent of trans youth have felt discriminated against due to their gender identity in the past year. Sixteen percent of trans students found their school to be more supportive than their home in the past year. And trans students who found their school to be gender-affirming had significantly lower rates of suicide attempts and suicidal ideation. This policy revision would remove the existence of a huge group of people from all school materials, including completely optional library books. How does not letting students know about other people prepare them to be twenty-first century global leaders? This policy will hurt students physically and emotionally. Do you want to be responsible for something that will harm students? If you're not here in the best interest of students, then why are you here? Thank you.
Mark Thornsby. Mark. Morgan Lee. Brett Robinson.
I don't think anything I could say today could be put as well as Mo just did. Mo, I do thank you for your courage in speaking today. All I will say is I read the policy plan and I saw that under it, it said that except in cases of suspected abuse, district staff will notify parents. I took this, and this is, could be found at the bottom of page two. When I read that, it almost felt like an admittance that we knew that abuse could be a problem in parental notification. I think that if you, as a parent, do not know that your own child is struggling with their identity, I, I trust the child more than I trust the parent at that point. I trust them with their own privacy, with their own life, with their own identity and the questions that they might have and who they go to with those questions. So this policy for me is not a question of whether the district should involve the parent, it's a question of whether the student should be forced by the district to involve the parent. So this policy claims to be about parental rights, but my question is, what about the child's personal right to privacy? Many of these children also happen to be members of the LGBTQ community, just as they are not forced to tell anyone that they might be gay, straight or otherwise. That is their private business and no one should be forced to compel them to share that information with anyone. I don't know what else to add. I wasn't expecting to have two minutes. That was it and I had preparation. But I really just want everyone to kind of take a moment and think back to when you were a kid. And if you kept any secrets from your parents, I know I didn't really keep any. I just happened to have a great relationship with my parents. I knew I could come to them no matter what I had on my mind, but unfortunately, not every child has that luxury. And so please reconsider this one. Thank you.
Mandy Giles.
My name is Mandy Giles and I'm speaking on agenda item 7A4. I'm the founder of the resource Parents of Trans Youth, which serves families in the greater Houston area, including in Sci Fair ISD. This proposed policy blatantly discriminates against your transgender students. The UCLA Williams Institute estimates that 1.4% of Texas youth identify as transgender. Multiply that by all the students in Sci Fair ISD and that's more than sixteen hundred trans and non-binary students in your school district. That's a pretty big number to exclude from feeling safe and welcome at school. Alerting parents that their child might be transgender without the child's permission has dangerous potential. The University of Chicago found that LGBTQ youth are 120% more likely to experience homelessness than non-LGBTQ youth. And sixty-four percent of those LGBTQ homeless kids were rejected by their families. So mandate, by mandating that parents be notified that their student wants to use a different name and pronouns, you are outing that child to their parents and there is a very real risk of imminent rejection and harm for that child within their family, just statistically. I'm also concerned about excluding gender identity from instructional materials. Censoring educational material related to gender identity tells transgender kids that who they are is not appropriate and that Sci Fair ISD thinks they don't belong and that is a painful message for any kid. Tonight, I am here for parents of trans kids in your district who are afraid to speak out against this policy. They're afraid of retaliation just for supporting their kids and that is a pitiful statement. Please do not adopt this harmful policy. Thank you.
Jeremy Eugene.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeremy Eugene. I'm a teacher at Sci Park. I teach English reading and social education and I have a cold, so forgive me, but I'm here to talk about what this looks like from a teacher's point of view. In our training material, we have access to curriculum or materials from the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. They publish a magazine called Educational Leadership. And the, if you search gender identity and ASCD in Google, you'll see that there are dozens of articles explaining the proper ways that if parents want more, more access and more rights, if you are struggling with developing policies for gender identity, they have options, they have guidelines. This is something that the district already has access to, right? And the most recent thing that is published on this is an article called Balancing Latitude and Limitations. It's by Ashley Wu and Elizabeth Steiner. It has three evidence-based approaches for teacher autonomy. The first one says, guide teachers toward evidence-based approaches and build the capacity to adapt these approaches to students. What this means is look up the best ways that you can do what you want to do. Number two, solicit teachers' perspectives and attend to their concerns when crafting school policies. Speaking for myself, I did not get notification that y'all were considering this policy. Nobody surveyed us about the, the best ways that we, that you could do this. That's something that you should consider. And the third thing, support teachers' use of evidence-based approaches, even in the face of conflict. On this one, there is a specific guideline that leaders might support teachers by creating and communicating clear protocols on school leaders and teachers' roles when responding to families' concerns and conveying to teachers the types of instructional materials and practices that are grounded in research. Thank you.
Discussion. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. I do have several questions. My first question is, what prompted the need for this new policy?
Well, I'll speak for myself. I've, I met with several teachers and one of, one of, there was, there's different components to this policy. One of, some of the teachers had asked me, there, there weren't, they weren't clear exactly on what the policy was in our, in our school district for, you know, as far as addressing, you know, proper pronouns, usage and things like that. And they, they had, yeah, they had genuine concerns that they, they didn't agree with, you know, the use of a biologic, maybe a biological boy being, you know, using pronouns for female. And there was a couple of people that actually told me it was religious. There was also a few people that told me they just didn't believe in it. It was, it was just against their personal belief system. So there was.
These are, these are teachers? I'm just going to clarify.
Yes, teachers. Teachers. So, so that's, that's kind of what prompted the, the, one, one portion of the policy. But as far as the parents' rights, I think this is something that we've been kind of discussing on and off for probably the last several months, just giving, giving the parents and more of an opportunity to understand what's going on with their children and giving them, giving them those rights. I mean, I think that's a, again, I don't, I don't believe there's, I mean, Marty, I'm going to lean on you, on, on this, but is there a law that specifically requires that that we, we can have teachers discuss sexuality with students? Is, are we in compliance with the state of Texas?
There, yes, we're in compliance with this policy. There's nothing illegal in this policy.
Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I actually did put a request into the policy committee, so not knowing everything that the policy committee was working on, I can tell you that at a parent night at the Berry Center hosted by counseling, on a safety topic, this topic came up among parents asking questions about conversations with counselors and others about these types of subjects and then whether they would have the right to know about those conversations. And they didn't get an answer that was yes. It was kind of a gray area. And much to Mr. Eugene's point, being, having been an educator, parents, others, people need to know what is yes and what is no. They need to know what are the, what is black and what is white, what they can do, what they can't do. I think that for parents, that brings peace. I think for teachers, it's good to know. I don't have to love it, but at least I know when I'm in compliance, when I'm not in compliance. And so that's parents and teachers. And this is also an area where the, for students, I feel like the Ms. Giles, did I say it right? I think this is incredible that there are organizations that are there to support because my, I've had every kind of friend and my kid has every kind of friend, but that's the, that's an organization professional, able to do that, expert in that, set up for that purpose. They're the better people to handle it than a few teachers trained in how to give pedagogy in English. They are beautiful, they are about relationships, but I think that this is something that can be handled better by people who are there and the parents choose. And I will always say it's parents' choice. Parents' rights, parents' children, they deserve the opportunity to parent their children. Not everyone, I mean, God bless us who had better parents who we could be honest with, but that is still not the role of the school to parent. And so I requested policy and I appreciate the work that was done through the committee to bring this to us in this form.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue my questions. That did answer one of my questions about who brought the policy forward. I will ask also, are you aware that CFISD already has a policy that's extensive regarding parent rights, FA legal, as well as we follow and are in compliance with chapter 26 of Texas Education Code, which is parents' rights? So this new policy really just mostly repeats parts of the Texas Education Code with a few new things. I guess I'm questioning, why do we need to add another policy when it, most of it is redundant, which just adds additional bureaucracy? And my, another question is, how does this new policy support our district goals?
Having made a request for it, people couldn't answer these questions, so clearly policy wasn't doing what it was needed to do. It had to be more specific and more precise so that people could know safely what is able to be done and not be done. I think people deserve that in a profession. Students deserve that, parents deserve that. And so it wasn't, I couldn't find the answers and I looked, if I looked for the answers, they were not there. So to me, that is the need for a policy, to give answers, to make it clear.
And I can expand on that. Teachers that I spoke with just wanted a, a clear direction. There was no, they, that, these things that weren't, weren't addressed in clear policy before, and so we're giving clear guidance to our, to our students, for, for our teachers and staff now.
I guess, I guess my question is, I feel like the material, that in following chapter 26 of the Texas Education Code and FA legal, that those concerns are already addressed without the need for another policy. I still don't feel comfortable or have a clear understanding of how this policy supports our district goals or supports students. I am somewhat skeptical of bringing another new policy that simply copies what's been done in a neighboring school district versus, I know you said that you heard from some teachers. In my experience, I've not heard one person at a campus, a teacher, a parent, a community member express a concern about this topic. Again, I feel like this may be a solution in search of a problem when a problem does not actually exist in our district. I also, based upon my understanding of the materials that were shared with the policy committee in, in an effort to push this new policy, it does appear that it's pushing a suggested board policy that was developed and promoted by an outside organization, the Texas Public Policy Foundation, TPPF, which has publicly and aggressively advocated against public education and for defunding public schools. I know this because I received the same materials via an email from this organization that Natalie shared with your committee. I got those same materials. I deleted it because, and disregarded it because I don't take policy direction from When a neighboring school district did pass this policy, TPPF did send out a press release applauding it and crowing about it. I received this email and I think some of you probably did too. I received this email, and I think some of you probably did too. So my question is, will there be a press release about CFISD sent out by TPPF if this policy is passed? I'm asking Todd right now. Natalie, thank you.
I have absolutely no idea about TPPF. I mean, that's not.
You don't know that that's the source of this policy? Material that was sent to you by Natalie?
There was a lot of materials that Ms. Blassingame sent over to us.
Yes, even though the source?
We shared that with general counsel. We crafted a policy that was, again, in compliance with state law. We're following state law, Julie.
Todd, there's not in state law. The state law in that policy is correct. There's references to Texas Education Code, there's references to the Texas Attorney General. The parts in there that do not have references to state law are the parts I'm questioning. You're saying that you received materials from Natalie, and you didn't ask her where she got it? Well, I'm telling you where she got it, TPPF.
Okay, I will just say that I have zero connections with TPPF. I have no idea what TPPF will do. I know The Chronicle always writes articles, I'm sure they will. And I will also tell you that the material that I researched came from many different places. Some of the pushback was that it wasn't from the state of Texas, and I think that may be why some things were directed that way, because they weren't sure that law from other states would apply. I pushed back on the committee, and I said, "It does apply." That's the whole point of case law and how law works. Law works on precedent. And so I can tell you, if you want to sit through and go through.
I received it myself.
How many states and places. There is a lot of research just done to see what can be done in the best interest to make sure everyone's very clear on what can be done, so everyone is safe and everyone is clear, and everyone can then proceed to educate our children.
Everyone is safe, everyone is safe, everyone.
And make sure that we can also all have, you know, a safe community. So this was not just based on TPPF, and I can speak with 100% of, I can make 100% statement that there's no connection to any of those people. I've spoken with no one there, but they did provide some material that I think was quite high quality.
I received the same material, and again, I disregarded it because I do not take policy direction from TPPF. Are you aware that the other school district in our area that adopted this policy is under federal investigation? Todd, are you aware of that?
I am not aware of current federal investigations through KD, or are you referring to KDISD?
Yes, I am.
I was not aware of that, but again, we have general counsel that we lean on to make sure that we're in full compliance of the laws of the state of Texas. And so we are in full compliance, Ms. Sims, is that correct, when I say we're in full compliance of the law with this policy?
There's nothing in the policy, to my knowledge, that violates state law.
Right. That question's been asked three times and answered, and I do understand the answer. But I'm telling, I'm asking you, do you want us, do you want SciFair to go down that same path and have a federal investigation filed against us?
Julie, I will say one more time, we are in compliance with the state of Texas, with the laws of the state of Texas. We lean on our general counsel, Ms. Marnie Sims, to give us the advice when we can create policy. We are leaning on that advice. She's the professional, she's the expert. We are in compliance in full with state law.
I understand. This board of seven does not include Ms. Marnie Collins-Sims. She is an advisor. This board is going to be the one voting on this policy. I have one other concern, well, I have a couple of concerns about this policy, and one is the process. It's been clarified that Natalie did bring this TPPF packet to the policy committee and has pushed this policy. I've noticed in the notes that, Todd, you met with Natalie before one of your committee meetings to discuss the materials, and then you met in the committee and discussed meeting with Natalie afterwards.
That is not a correct statement. We, Ms. Sims asked me to reach out to Natalie based on what is it actually that she wanted, and Natalie basically said.
And did you have that conversation?
I just said to send over what she, know what she wanted, because we didn't want to violate the Toma Texas Open Meetings Act. So I went off the guidance of our general counsel. Our general counsel gave me that guidance.
We're walking a very fine line. I have a question, a specific part of the policy under accommodations plans. I have a question about what HR's role is in on this and how that would be applied, again, under accommodations plans, where it says the HR will become involved. Will the teachers, is this the intent of involving HR, that the teachers will be reassigned or put on leave? Can you help clarify that?
Ms. Heineman, I would direct those questions to admin.
That's a good, that's a good, Marnie, question, actually, because we had talked about the process and the evaluation process.
If the policy is passed prior to second reading, I did let Ms. Franklin know that I would talk with Human Resources, but it would be a similar interactive dialogue, like under, for instance, Title VII, if an employee is requesting an accommodation, for instance, have a sincerely held religious belief, and, you know, this otherwise neutral rule, you know, may unduly burden my free exercise, and so HR has a role where they will have what's called an interactive dialogue, where we talk about what would be a reasonable accommodation, how can we still, you know, implement the rule while trying to accommodate your sincerely held religious belief. And so it's an interactive dialogue, and it's individualized, but that's the intent behind that piece. So if an employee wants to request an accommodation themselves, and that is triggered by them not wanting to follow the accommodation plan, then that would be handled through Human Resources, not on the campus, but it would be handled through Human Resources like other requests for accommodation. So I hope that answers the question.
No, it does, thank you. It's interesting that we have such an intentional process for accommodating the concern of the teacher, but I'm concerned about the process of accommodating the needs of the students.
We have an intentional process for that as well, so, and you can go into detail about that, because I don't think we're actually changing how we go through that process either.
You're talking about regulations?
With students, yeah.
Yes, yes. So I guess that would lead my question, then why is this policy needed if we already have accommodations and plans in regulation?
Marnie, do we currently have this set in policy, exactly verbatim what we discussed, and also adding the parental consent for surveys as well?
Well, the first part of the question, the accommodation plan, that is not currently in local policy. That is part of our, as Ms. Heineman said, regulatory practice. So that's been our administrative practice in how we consider any type of request for accommodation under any number of situations from 504 IDEA, Title IX. And so we do have that operationally, but it is not currently in a local policy. Oh, and then we have in, again, more administrative regulation operating guideline on surveys. I think it's in the employee handbook, Teresa? I cannot remember. So we do have some guidance on surveys, but again, as you asked, we don't have that in a local policy.
I guess, again, that just reinforces my, why do we need this when the intentions and the content and the actions are already covered? I don't know the need for another new policy, additional bureaucracy, when it's already being addressed at the level that needs to be addressed, which is operationally.
That actually brings me to a question, maybe for counsel, definitely for counsel. What is actually, regulations are not policy, not enforceable by the school board, and I think I've been doing some different trainings in different places, and I'm starting to understand that even legal policy is not actually policy enforceable directly by the school board. Local policy is what is enforceable by the school board. And so for us to just have a regulation or a local practice does not put it in policy, and it's not enforceable by the school district, is that correct? I mean, by the board, sorry.
And so you say enforceable by the board, so the board is at a governance level, they're at an oversight level, and so the board doesn't actually enforce anything. So you hire superintendent, you hire general counsel, and you tell us to enforce it. So I don't know if answering the question you're asking.
So we have to put in there the measures, exactly what needs to be done, what is held, the superintendent's held accountable for, and exactly what kind of, what would you call it? What are the, the results, should it not be followed in the district? And that's what I mean by enforceable, is that true? Right, so we lay out the policy for the superintendent to execute, and what makes it, and that makes it actually have to be, it is then policy and has to be enforced as written when it's put into policy, correct?
Well, so legal policy, and I want to make sure I'm answering the question that you asked. So legal policy is the law, and we all have to follow it. And so it is a policy that's enforceable. There are things in legal policy that if, you know, a teacher doesn't follow it, they may have, you know, employment ramifications, they may have certification ramifications, and it may not be in local policy, it's only in legal policy, but it is, you know, it's enforceable. And so local policy is where then the governing body says, okay, we know what the law says, here's how I want you to do it at the local level. And then, and you say that effectively to the superintendent, to your employee, and you say, "This is my expectation for where the district's going. You know, here's, we want to go north, I expect you to generally go up I-45." And so then the superintendent, he looks to his cabinet, he looks to directors, all the, down to, you know, the classroom staff, and says, "Okay, we're going, we're going to Dallas, we're taking I-45 north, but the first thing we're going to do is get on the Beltway, and then we're going to..." And so it's more like the turn-by-turn directions, and so that would be regulation, operating guidelines. And so if those things are not followed, there is consequence, but in that, there may be consequence from a performance standpoint, a variety of things, but it wouldn't be, like, it would be consequence, natural consequences, but it would be consequences as through the superintendent. So you would hold the superintendent accountable, and the superintendent would hold his staff accountable.
So we do policy in order to hold the superintendent accountable and hold the staff accountable. We create the policy that gives that roadmap, and we are a local school board, and this is the most primary example of citizen-based, local elected bodies, because each community has its personality, each community has its voters, each community has its students, each has its parents, and so this is why there's legal and then local policy happens, so that the local, the people elected by the people in the local site put that roadmap down for the superintendent according to local values and local beliefs or local expectations, right?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
I'll conclude. My last questions will be, again, what problem is this policy trying to solve? If individual teachers have questions, they have people that they can go to. They have their supervisors, they can talk to the principal, they can talk to HR, they can talk to student services if they have questions. I don't see the need to create a whole new policy, one that reg, is, just repeats current law or policy that's already in place, but adds a few different elements that are not necessarily based in law. Those definitions that are included, if you look up those terms using any reliable source, like a dictionary, those are not the definitions. It's clear where those definitions come from. I question how this policy actually helps CFISD meet the goals we've set, focusing on literacy, ensuring students are college and career military-ready. As a trustee, I have not had one person reach out to me expressing a concern about this issue. I feel like this policy is not a priority, that we have more important issues to deal with. Thank you.
I have a question, counsel. Did we just say that if a teacher had a question, they're not sure how to deal with one of these issues, they would need to go to, they know who to go to to answer it, but there are not answers currently on the books for how to handle such a situation, because there's not policy that exists at the local level yet about how to tell the teacher the answer that they can know is safe and follows the law of the state of Texas, because many of these topics are not addressed in policy, they were just some regulations. Is that accurate?
It's not previously in policy, that's correct.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, move on to 7B. The board considered approving the Shack's recommendation to remove health as required course for graduation. We have a presentation, Dr. Gori and Christine Cole.
Good evening.
We do have one speaker first, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Ms. Eugene.
Jeremy Eugene, your time's two minutes.
Hello, once again, I'm Jeremy Eugene. I am a teacher at SciPark. I teach special education, English, and reading. I'm here because I listened to the recording of the Shack meeting for December, and it was clear that it was contentious, that things were discussed for a half an hour or more, but it was not clear what anyone was saying during that meeting. You could not hear what people were saying on the recording. For most of the discussion, you could make out like one or two words, but you could not make out full sentences, you could not make out people's thoughts and their arguments for why the course should or should not be removed. The meeting minutes do say that Linda Macias explained the topics covered, including decision-making, goal-setting, mental health, tobacco and alcohol prevention, treatment, body systems, physical activity, CPR, but, and you can make out that she says that the same topics will be covered in other classes, but you can't make out any of the discussion around the consequences of removing those from the requirement of the instruction that would happen in a health class. So if there was any discussion around something like, for instance, decreasing the instruction time on a crucial topic like alcohol prevention, we don't know what was said in that meeting. So due to this, I'm wondering if there's an alternate approach that could be taken instead of accepting the Shack's recommendations, such as reconvening to properly re-record and retake the vote, or perhaps getting a written statement and submitting it along with the meeting minutes from each Shack member explaining their statements to the discussion. And I also want to say that I hope that y'all do whatever you must to ensure that all recordings are fully and clearly audible going forward. Thank you.
I'd like to bring up Ms. Castro. She's our co-chair for the Shack, and so she's going to begin our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Essens Castro, and I serve as a co-chair for the School Health Advisory Committee alongside Ms. Cole, who is our other co-chair. The School Health Advisory Committee was tasked with providing a recommendation to the Board of Trustees regarding whether health should remain a local graduation requirement. Currently, health is required course for graduation in SciFair ISD. To inform this decision, committee members reviewed the information about Health I course as well as the results of parents and student surveys. On December 3, a vote was conducted, and the committee recommended eliminating health as a graduation requirement while continuing to offer it as a elective. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Cole and Ms. Gori will now provide more details.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. We're going to provide a little bit more information. The school, oops, one second. There we go. The School Health Advisory Council has provided a recommendation tonight because Texas Education Code mandates that a school district consider the recommendation of the local School Health Advisory Council before making changes to the district's health education instruction. The Texas Education Code indicates that Shack is responsible for recommending to the school board if the school district requires health education for high school graduation. On November 14, the Shack convened and was tasked with providing a recommendation to the Board of Trustees about whether or not health should be removed as a graduation requirement. Currently, health is a local graduation requirement in CFISD. Former Chief Academic Officer Dr. Macias provided an overview of the task and shared key information about the health course. This included details on the TEACs, covered timing of the course and its benefits. Dr. Macias also noted that some of the TEACs currently addressed in the health course would still need to be incorporated into other content areas if removed. Additionally, the Shack reviewed survey questions and distributed to CFISD parents and students. Students only participate in the survey with parental consent. Dr. Macias answered questions from members. On December 3, the Shack reconvened to review the survey results, seek clarification on any outstanding questions, and finalize its recommendation to the Board of Trustees. After extensive discussion, a vote was conducted. Dr. Gori will provide you with the survey results.
The survey captured data from both students and parents, looking first at the parent responses. Here's the first question. Do you support CFISD keeping high school health as a graduation requirement? There were six.
There were 6,595 respondents. Seventy-five percent of them voted yes, 25% voted no. Continuing with all parent, with the parent responses, do you support CFISD offering high school health as an elective? 6,590 respondents, 77% said yes, 23% said no. Now, looking at student data. Do you support CFISD keeping high school health as a graduation requirement? Same question. 33,686 students responded, 59% said yes, 41% no. Again, students answered this question. Do you support CFISD offering high school health as an elective? 75%, 79% said yes, 21% said no.
There were two main discussion points regarding the interpretation of the survey results, which centered around parent choice. Some members felt that the survey results indicated that parents had expressed their preference by completing the survey, supporting the idea that health should remain as a graduation require, requirement. Others believe that parents could exercise choice for their child by having health offered as an elective instead. After the vote, 55.5% of the members recommended eliminating health as a graduation requirement while continuing to offer it as an elective. Although there wasn't consensus, the majority, the majority voted to forward the recommendation to the Board of Trustees. This concludes our presentation. We will now answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Lucas? I have one from a survey standpoint. One survey asked a question of parents, do you want to keep it as a graduation requirement? Seventy-four percent, almost 75% said yes, and then, almost, just slightly less than that, said they would like to keep it as, they would accept it as an elective. Can you help me understand the, tease out the differences there? Because it seems, are those the same group of parents? It's the same number of respondents. And so, it's, one is saying, yes, keep it as a requirement, and the other seems to be that they're saying, yeah, let's, we're good with it being an elective.
In the initial meeting on November 14th, there were some questions about the wording of the survey. At that point, the survey had already been presented or given to parents and students. Is there anything else that should be added about that? Okay.
Yeah, just from my own experience in building surveys, this one indicates that the wording may have led to a little bit of confusion, because those are, should be flip sides of the same coin.
Well, you could do, go three ways. You could completely eliminate health from our curriculum completely.
Correct, right.
You could obviously have it as an elective, or you can have it as a requirement, so.
Yeah, I just, for future feedback in writing surveys, and I'm not sure it was very clear, because the numbers to me, tell me it's slightly more said, let's keep it as an elective, which is, you know, that's good feedback. But, I'm surprised in seeing those numbers pan out the way that they did.
It's even more telling when you look at the students.
Yep.
Because there's a stark difference between them wanting it as a mandate versus an elective.
I have a question. How were the surveys administered to the students? Was it in health class or other classes as well?
Dr. Kleber, can you provide insight?
The surveys were administered through English class. All students have a specific English class in high school, as well as in middle school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. You know, the district first solicited information from parents, students, teachers, and community members about this question of, should health remain as a requirement for graduation? And at that time, the survey results were very similar. Seventy-five percent of parents said yes to keep it as a graduation requirement, 77% of students said yes, 85% of teachers, and 90% of community members said yes to keep health as a graduation requirement. The board, when we received those results, some folks weren't satisfied and questioned the validity due to sample size, although the results were accepted for the other four topics that were included in that initial survey. So, the district did another survey, which is the survey results we're seeing today. And, to the credit of doing a second survey, much better participation, so much more reliable and valid. In the second survey, what we've seen, as it's been presented, is that parents want to keep health as a graduation requirement, 75%. That includes 74% of high school parents that were surveyed, and even 75% of middle school parents that were surveyed. So, their students haven't even taken it yet, but they see value in keeping health as a graduation requirement, and 74% of high school parents did. I think the survey, I agree with Lucas, that it was somewhat confusing. In my many conversations that I had with folks that reached out to me because they were confused, the way that it was interpreted was, yes, I want it as a graduation requirement, but if you're going to not do that, at least keep it as a, as a, an elective, it's like the backup. But their first preference was to keep it as a graduation requirement. Incredibly, our students came out in force to answer these questions. 33,600 students responded. 59% of students said they wanted to keep health as a graduation requirement. That includes 60% of high school students who responded, that said they wanted to keep, these are students who have taken the class and see value in it. When the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council was asked, these are the top students at our, all 12 of our high schools, 75% of our highest achieving students said they wanted to keep health as a graduation requirement. According to both of these input opportunities, it's very clear that parents and students want to maintain health as a graduation requirement. So, I question, why would we make a change that very few people want, but parents and students want to keep?
I would, I'm just going to make comments, I'm not answering questions. I, actually, as a parent, my daughter thought it was a very useful class. I have shared the curriculum up here from the DIAS. I think there's some incredibly important information that students can learn in health. And if I was choosing for my daughter today, I would say yes to health, I would make that decision. Now, listen, health is, this is not a new conversation. I was a high school principal in 2010, when this came up for discussion, and from the state, the first time that you could choose to have it be a health requirement, I mean, have it be removed as a graduation requirement. And in spring branch ISD, we did remove it. It was interesting to see those who chose and didn't choose the class. I think the fact that the students are responding like this is the biggest compliment there can be to our health teachers and our curriculum writers in this district, because kids do think the class is relevant, and they are getting useful information. And so, I think that's amazing. But since 2010, we've also lost the community's trust on issues. We have administrative procedures we do on things, and kind of do things, but there's things that people care about. You have a strong, if you think 77% of parents of 100, let's just say, even if it was one parent per 119,000 kids, right? 77% is an impressive number, but so is the 23% that said no, and the 25% that said no. Those people don't trust us to do this curriculum exactly how they want to present it to their children. For the same reason that I spent considerable amount of time researching a parents' rights policy, parents deserve the right to decide for their child, the content they want them to have. My right for my daughter and my children would be to take health. I like the class, I think it offers them that, but that should be my choice. So, to me, this is very, the data screams at us and tells us exactly what to do. It says for the 75% that say yes, they want it as a class, give it to them. And for the 23% that say no of parents, don't let them, they don't have to take it. It's easy. I feel like our changing, we have used it very conveniently with PACE, and ironically, my own, feedback from my own child and friends that hang out still at our house all winter break from college, PACE was less useful even than health. They would all say, keep health, not PACE. And so, I'm just going to say that the, to me, this is simple, because you can take, you can honor every single last person in this data by choosing option two, which is that we would remove it as a graduation requirement and keep it as an elective. Then you've answered everyone's need, and that's how I feel like the Shack voted, and I appreciate those who served there. But to me, this is a no-brainer. Every parent can choose for their child. Will we have a challenge of creating electives choices? Do we have to look at GPA games that people play in order to, because this was a great equalizer? We will have to, because that's actually, talk about who moved my cheese, that's access to the University of Texas, right? That's access to A&amp;M, that's access to things for students. So, I do think we have a bit of a challenge on our hands. Let's get creative. Let's choose electives that people want to take, that are also at the same GPA weight. But to me, we can answer everyone's desire from this survey by choosing option two.
So, one of the things that I noticed is, I cannot draw a conclusion that there was an overwhelming preference for health to stay as a requirement, simply from the surveys. We, in essence, have two contradictory surveys. I think we could have benefited from a question that said, would you support health as an elective if health wasn't a requirement? I think we could have benefited from that question as well. But, I know we devoted a little bit of time to the survey, and the survey was useful, but there was some contradictory elements that aren't, allow us to draw hard conclusions from the survey alone. I would like to ask Ms. Castro a few questions, if she's available. Welcome to public service. So, as our representative from Shack, again, you know, we've discussed the survey a little bit. Let me ask you a question, kind of just from the Shack's viewpoint. How did y'all interpret the survey data, and what were some of the key factors that led ultimately to your recommendation?
Kind of what you just said. You know, it's hard to draw a hard conclusion, just because some of the questions were contradictory. We were torn, you know, but in the end, we kind of just took a vote, like, we had an open discussion about, hey, what are your concerns about the survey? What are your concerns when we went over through, when we went over the curriculum? And that's just kind of how we drew our conclusion.
So, you focused on the survey, which was important, of course. Can, can you talk, did y'all pro and con the actual curriculum, and did y'all discuss the actual class itself, and the benefits that it would provide students as a requirement? And I'm assuming, I'm going to make an assumption, that there was probably a general consensus that health class in the curriculum had some value.
Right.
But I guess probably the linchpin was, do we make this a requirement, or do we make this an elective? And kind of give me a little insight as to what the discussion was on that, and what ultimately led to the recommendation.
With the help of Dr. Linda Macias, we kind of just like, asked a lot of questions. Hey, if we do not keep health as a requirement for SciFair ISD, where do some of those, where does some of that curriculum go? Where does that fall? Because there are some topics in there that still have to be taught, and that was one of our main concerns, like, okay, does this fall on another subject? And, you know, when it was brought up as keeping it as an elective, or, you know, the recommendation of, it was, how do I say it, like, it's not as in-depth, if it's an elective, as if we keep it for a, I'm assuming, year-long class.
So, if I'm kind of putting it all together, the committee looked at it, realized there's some, there's some valuable aspects of it, and therefore, it should be offered, and it would basically hit those goals of making that curriculum, that instruction, and that subject matter available to the students.
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for your service, and we appreciate all your efforts and all your community members. And I don't have any more questions for you, nor do I have any more for Admin, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to just add, I don't know, Dr. Blasengay may have had a, have a different choice of words, maybe a better choice of words, but I don't know, it's about lost trust. I think maybe it could, it just gives parents a little bit more options, maybe they, maybe they don't believe in it as much, you know, but I trust, maybe, you know, I've had difficulty sometimes getting the words out that I wanted to get out. But, I just think options was, was really, and I was in attendance at that particular Shack meeting, and that's what I kept, kept hearing from the parents that were supportive of keeping it as an elective, is giving, giving parents more options.
Yeah, and let me jump in. From the data, what I see is that the students clearly state, give this to us as an elective. And we have parents that feel strongly about it both ways. Fine. To your point, Dr. Blasengay, we can give them the option, and those that want it can choose it. This is a very clear response.
Thank you. You know, that, one of the questions that Justin asked brings up a question that I had for Dr. Gori. The question of the materials that still needs to be covered, the teaks that still need to be covered, as well as the, not necessarily teaks, but content that has to be covered as required by state law. What, how, how will those, that be covered if this becomes a, an elective instead of a requirement?
If this becomes an elective, we will cover those teaks and requirements through other courses, integrating some in PACE, some in biology, and PE, or the PE-related courses.
Okay, I guess my concern would be, PE, that makes sense, to teach CPR in PE. And for those students who are doing band or dance, they would take that, they would have to do that during their extracurricular. I am concerned about adding extra content, or taking time away from a core content area like biology, that those, those teachers would lose time with their students in the classroom to accommodate lessons on vaping, or alcohol drug use, or positive body image, or, you know, the need for physical exercise and good nutrition. You know, I do feel that, you know, we've talked to the DIAS about how safety is so important, and that includes issues like vaping drugs, mental health issues. And that's why I personally believe, and I agree with the parents who answered the surveys, that those topics are so important that they should be a requirement for all students. All parents may not choose to make that choice for their student, but those students may be the ones who most need time with a trusted adult to talk about drug and alcohol use, and nutrition, and mental health. Back to the Shack, I also want to share my thank you to the Shack Committee for their time and effort. I did notice when I was looking at the minutes, the Shack Committee has 17 members, and at this particular meeting where they were taking the vote, only nine members were present. That is barely quorum. That's just, they made quorum by one. Four voted to keep health as a graduation requirement, and five voted to remove health. So, again, just barely, five to four, did they vote, a group of nine, when we have thousands of parents and students saying that they want to keep it as a requirement. My question is, of those five that voted to remove it, were they all parents of current Todd, oh, you said you were there, sorry.
I believe every one of the, everyone was a parent that, that voted to keep it as an elective, is that correct?
To keep it as a, my question is to keep, to.
That voted, they were parents, yes.
Yes.
I believe one is not a parent that voted for.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. So, in essence, one person's opinion overrides or undermines the wishes of thousands of parents and students. I have a concern about that. As a, as a board member, I have a concern that we would let the opinion of one person who's not a current parent override the wishes as clearly expressed from thousands of parents and students.
Trustee Heineman, let me just make a comment on that. I don't know this person, but that person is also a stakeholder in this community. They have a vested interest in the education of our students, and their opinion is not any less of an opinion than a parent's opinion. So, I think that's a dangerous line to walk, and I wouldn't devalue anybody's opinion over anybody else's.
100%. I 100% agree that, that's why the first survey that was done, 90% of community members, not parents, not teachers, 90% wanted to keep health as a graduation requirement. I value all stakeholders' input. I just want to make sure that we are listening to all stakeholders, not one, or two, or five.
I still challenge that comment, Trustee Heineman, severely, because what we have in the data in front of us is that we have a clear perspective from both students and parents. The majority of both said they would like to keep it as an elective. I don't see the gap here.
I guess I see it as in our responsibility to ensure that we are preparing students, that we're giving them all the tools and resources that they need, including the ones that their parents may not choose this for their own child. We have requirements for students to help them, prepare them for the future in other courses, other classes. I think this is one that has value to our community, to our parents, to our students.
Yep.
I just see, I see the value in the course, clearly, parents. Clearly, parents and students seek value in the course. It does no harm to include it as a graduation requirement. It doesn't hurt anyone to keep it as a graduation requirement, as we have.
I think, from my perspective, Trustee Heineman, I think the issue is, the difference in philosophies, what I hear at the moment is that, my perspective is that if the parents want the choice to be able to make that elective for their kid, so be it. Because I don't want to take that responsibility in this situation of presenting a curriculum that some parents would rather their students spend time on a different elective. There's no harm there.
Dr. Goree, can you share with us the other electives that are available as one semester classes for our freshman students?
We have five options total: professional communications, photojournalism, LEAD-worthy, touch systems data, and one, all of those are on-level options, and then a K-level option, world area studies.
Right, so world area studies is only available for eleventh and twelfth graders, according to the course catalog. So just an FYI, that would not be available to freshmen or sophomores. Photojournalism requires, the student has to have their own digital camera. It's in the course catalog.
They can borrow them from the school, my child took that course.
Okay, and they have additional fees for materials. Touch data and systems entry is keyboarding. We are now teaching that to kindergartners, so they can take their third grade STAR tests and key in their, type in their answers. I don't see, I personally believe that health class, that discusses very important topics, really about safety, we talk about safety as a top priority for us, these are topics that help keep our students safe, has a greater priority over keyboarding, or photojournalism, or professional communications, which is actually covered in PACE. So I'm just sharing my opinion, we don't have to agree, it's a vote, we each get a vote. But I see, I feel that it's important to listen to our community and to do what's best for our students.
If I can, Ms. Heineman, if we make health an elective, we will open world area studies to ninth graders, ninth through twelfth grade.
Thank you, Dr. Goree.
And, Trustee Heineman, my comment, and my thought there is that the analysis that you shared early was based upon historical fact where this was a requirement, hence the elective would not have been in place. So, thank you, Dr. Goree, for clarifying what an option may be. And I think we're always challenged by creating material as an elective that students find, that students and parents find helpful in getting them to their graduation objectives. So that's my perspective. We don't agree, that's fine, we both get a vote.
Very good.
I just also wanted to make mention that for one semester of health really truly is not enough if we're talking about safety and things like that. Hopefully, something that the district will consider is the advisory model with having a trusted educator that would be invested in students throughout the course of their high school career. And so I think it's great that we give parents a choice. There was, this was not a unanimous survey that showed a high, like ninety percent wanted this or whatever. And so I think when you're looking at choices, you want to give parents the choice for what's best for their students. And it sounds like, based on what Dr. Goree shared, a lot of students will still be taking health, according to the electives, maybe that they would not be interested for their students on the other ones. So it'll still be available for them if that choice was made in the vote.
And I would, one more point. Ms. Cole, I know we talked about while we were at the Shack meeting, that we only had a slug number of people that actually responded, actually even opened the email. I think it was like forty-eight percent, if I recall, forty-eight percent of the emails that were sent out were actually opened?
I don't have the, I wouldn't have the answer to those questions, but Dr. Claiborne can speak to the actual survey. Sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven surveys were sent. Of those, six thousand six hundred and sixty-five had apparent response to one or more questions. Twenty-eight thousand ninety-three, the email was read, but the survey was not taken. And then twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three, the email was read, oh, excuse me, the email was sent but not read, so was not opened. And then we had two thousand two hundred and thirty-six that were not delivered.
Yeah. Well, again, I think we, I touched base with Teresa, we spoke about this briefly. If you want to kind of touch base on my suggestion moving forward?
Well, in this particular situation, the survey, we used two different methods to make parents aware of the survey. The school messenger that went out via text did not include a link to the survey, because that had to be sent via email through a separate system, because there was a unique link for each parent. So the text message that went to parents was just to notify them to check their email for the survey. So you may see some differences in the numbers, and I know that you expressed that some parents said, I got a text message, but I didn't get an email. Well, it could be the email that was on file was not accurate, or it got blocked, or something, and then vice versa. Some of the parents that may have received an email said, I didn't get a text message, but they may have opted not, opted out, or have not opted in to receive text messages through school messenger. So that's why you saw two different methods being used to make parents aware of this survey opportunity.
Thank you.
I, I guess for a lot of years in education, there was this concept in loci parenti, which basically we would operate in the stand, or the stance of the parents, instead of the parents or for the parents. And I think that has just shifted completely in our culture. There's not an in loci parenti anymore, it's about parents and their rights and their decisions for their child. And so I feel like it's a big philosophical thing, but I stand, I stand on the side of the parents having the decisions for their child. I don't think it's my job to make those decisions for parents as a trustee, is to set the parameters and the setting and the policy and the, such that it can be that parents can make the decisions for their children. I'd also say that it looks like to, the trustee comeback's comment, if the kids, if we look at how the kids voted, right? That looks about seventy-nine percent of the kids would be choosing to take health. So then you have maybe a teacher, two units, maybe of teachers that are available, and especially with how a master schedule works in a high school. I would a hundred percent want to throw out a challenge to administration, and if not even to the same discussion about policy, and, but I would say an advisory model, when we really pace, you know, we skip that decision for now, and that discussion was really robust. And I think there's so much incredible promise also there. But I think that kids need that guidance and input as far as making choices for career or employment or college outside of high school. And just in ninth grade is not enough, frankly. So I would say those units, I know we're in tight budget times, but be able to use, if there was, let's say that's twenty percent of the kids didn't take health and those units are available, then let's put them on building advisory so that we can have more support for students. And then finally, I would say, I also challenge administration to look at what electives we can offer. When we were in the session over here, it was very well-attended by parents that Dr. Macias held, there was, I think she was probably a CTE teacher sitting on the front row. Some of those intro courses that let kids get sooner, faster, harder, better into their career tech ed course of study, anything that we could offer that brings more opportunities for students to take full advantage of the long-term program in the, like in a CTE area, I would suggest, I would like to challenge us to look for more courses, that could be semester courses at the high school.
All right, I think we've exhausted the discussion on that. Let's continue on with seven C. The board will consider approving a request for TEA for low attendance day waiver. I believe we received the information contained in our board packet. Any questions? Seeing none. Seven D, the board will consider approving approximately point-two-six acres to Chimney Hill Municipal Utility District. This item could be discussed in closed session. Board members, do you have any questions for Matt on this?
I don't have any questions.
That will be discussed. Do you need a closed session? Is my question.
I do not need a closed session.
Thank you. So Matt, you're free. Seven E, the board will consider making good cause termination not exist by law for the following individuals listed in the board packet to resign their respective employment contracts. This item will be discussed in closed session. Seven F, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to the individual listed here. This proposed employment of the district is under probationary contract, could be terminated. It's for to recommend the president of the board notify the individual proposed action to terminate his employment pursuant to section twenty-one dot one oh four of the Texas Educator Code. This item will be discussed in closed session. Seven G, the board will consider a level four grievance of a level three decision. This item we discussed in closed session. And then continuing on in our discussion, the portion items of the agenda, seven, excuse me, eight A, the board will discuss evaluation duties employment of legal services. This item will be discussed in closed session. And then there was an addendum, which will be discussed on Thursday night. One A, the board considered termination, good cause not exist to suspend for the individual listed here pending discharge. Board members, we will go into closed session, briefly discuss the HR items, and then come back out for the level four hearing. So please be brief in your wrap-up. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Also like to thank those who are watching from home. May I please have a motion to move into closed session? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, let's move into closed session, please, briefly, so we can get HR out of here. Thank you.